07-20R. As the mayor, I have determined that conducting meetings of the city council with an anchor location such as the city council chambers or the administration conference room presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present there. The following are facts upon which this determination has been made. Utah declared a state of emergency November 8th, 2020 due to the increase in case counts of COVID-19, a virus outbreak that has been recognized by the World Health Organization as an organization, federal, state, and local leaders as a pandemic. Federal, state, and local authorities recommend that individuals limit public gatherings, wear face masks, and follow social distance guidelines. It is difficult to anticipate the number of attendees at any meeting in order to maintain social distancing to comply with state phased guidelines. Further, regardless of the number of attendees, social distancing measures for council, staff, and attendees will be difficult to maintain in the city council chamber administration rooms. COVID-19 continues to pose an immediate threat to the health, safety, and welfare of American Fork City residents. American Fork City can provide a way for the public to hear or hear and view open portions of the city council meetings and to provide a way to participate in those public meetings. I'm going to move on to the agenda. First of all, we have a presentation by Alpine School District. We have with us Rob Smith, Dr. Shane Farnsworth, and board member Sarah Beeson. And we will give the floor and the screen to you guys to take it. And then we'll, if we have any questions, if you're okay, we might follow up with you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and city staff, just grateful to spend a few minutes with you and share just a brief update. We've tried to do this annually just to engage with our good members of the American Fork City Council and staff, and we love working with Mayor Frost as well. I've got with us tonight our board member from the area, Sarah Beeson, and then Dr. Shane Farnsworth is also online, will be participating with us as well. So I'm going to go ahead and share the screen, if I may, and we'll jump into some information here. Mayor, can you see that presentation?
Yes. Yeah, you've got the whole screen, so it looks great.
Okay, fantastic. But one of the things that we really value in Alpine School District is our history. And you'll see one of our schools just a few years ago, up in that top right-hand corner, back when social distancing was not an issue. And see those beautiful children, some teachers and caring adults that are striving their very best to support parents and families in the learning of children. And on that bottom left, you see one of our newer schools. I wish I had a current aerial. Dr. Farnsworth shared one with the board this morning. That's a school down in Vineyard City. And the roof that you see on the left side that's done and on, the rest of that's completed. As we see the classroom wing there, that just the walls were going up when this picture was taken. And that school will be completed here in April, I believe, of this year. And we're just grateful for our community and those good people who value education today and into the future, just like they did years ago with that picture up on the far right of that first slide. This is our board minus the one in the middle. We need a new board picture. Scott Carlson was defeated in the November election, replaced by board member Stacy Bateman. Many of you may know Stacy. Stacy is our Region PTA, Region 9 PTA president, and she represents the Lehigh area. Our new board president, Dr. Mark Clement, and our own board vice president, Sarah Beeson from American Fork. And we're excited to work with these great people. They really care about you and your families, our business community, as well as our kids. Just a brief snapshot of the district. We provide these maps to our board, and as soon as we provide these maps, they're outdated. Just like American Fork has seen just a tremendous amount of growth around the 5th east area, south of the I-15, and all that you're dealing with. We continue to see a lot of growth throughout the district, whether that's in the Vineyard area, American Fork, Lehigh, or what we see out west. And again, we're just privileged to serve the 14 municipalities that we have as part of Alpine School District. And we just want to strive to keep finding ways to utilize the resources that are scarce of the good people in our community or use the best that we possibly can. Some point of information we wanted to share for the current year, even with the pandemic and kind of a blip in the number of students that we had. We were a few less than what we projected. Still over 80,000, nearly 81,000 students in our school district. We hired a lot of teachers, over 500 new teachers, and you can see the breakout of the teachers by division. And each division includes our special educators, which, in Rob's opinion, every one of them should get a golden ticket right to heaven. But just some phenomenal educators that have joined our team. And as you look at that number, when you think we have about 3,800 certified teachers on our staff, it's a pretty big number. One of the reasons for that is we have a lot of our teachers are women. And a lot of those women, spouse will finish a degree and they'll end up moving out of the area or they'll start a family and they'll stay home. So we do with our universities, BYU and UBU, that provide a lot of our great educators. We do have a good number of teachers that turn over year over year. This is actually down about 150 from last year. So anyway, great, great things going on with our teaching staff. And you'll see this next slide, the number one priority of our board is to recruit and retain the very best teachers. They don't just say that, they mean that. And we're striving to find ways to support them, whether it's social emotional well-being, whether that's with compensation packages that are attractive and competitive, or whether it's a professional learning team and a coach that works directly with them to help and support that learning in the classroom. I had a meeting this afternoon, we had eight teachers. And we brought together this working group to talk about teacher work conditions and compensation and what they wanted to see and what their voice. And we had members of our teachers association, we had veteran teachers, we had brand-new teachers, we had teachers that weren't members of our association. And it's just been a lot of fun to engage with them and have them tell us what we can do and the feedback we can take back to our board to make sure that we're doing this very thing and why this is so important. It's not just because we have a lot of teachers that come in and out of the profession, but all of the research, and Dr. Farnsworth could share this better than I, but all of the research says the best outcomes are driven by the very best teachers. And that connect between that caring adult that's competent, skilled, and supported, working with those children to help support them and their learning, that's how we're going to get the best results. And so that's our focus. This next slide, in a COVID year, we have had a lot of change. And you know, this last Saturday, you may have heard from neighbors, we had a vaccination clinic at multiple locations. We had over 3,800 educators vaccinated with their first series. We thank all of our partners, our team that made that happen. The governor and the health department for prioritizing our teachers. But a lot of change, and we're hoping that this is the start of a pushback that really we can continue to stay in school face-to-face and hopefully get back to some sense of new normal or revised normal that our educators have seen as they've worked both online and in person. And so on our website, you'll see things like this. The team worked just tirelessly through the summer to prepare for a variety of options for parents. If parents were concerned, wanted to keep their kids learning at home, online, we had options for that. If they wanted to have kids come to some classes and not others, we had options for that. And if they wanted them to come face-to-face, we had options for that. Our board just feels really strongly that we want to do all we can to keep students learning in classroom face-to-face as quick as possible. So this was our website, the different options that I just outlined for elementary, for secondary. Again, we've listened to teachers, we've listened to parents, we've listened to students, we've made modifications. Some of you may also know about the secondary schedule with the Wednesday online learning day, not this week because of the short week, but that revised schedule, just again, trying to decrease stress, maintain learning face-to-face as much as possible, and not go to some of the hybrid or the purely online options like you've seen in other school districts, not just in Utah, but throughout the nation. One of the things I'm really proud of, and this is an older snapshot, but on our main webpage, if you had questions about your school in American Fork, and let's say my kids went to Legacy and then to AF Junior and then AFI. If I wanted to know what the case counts were at that particular school, I could drill right down on our main webpage. We have that data for parents or for the public to look at so they can be informed about what's happening and what we found with all of the data. And again, I appreciate our board leadership, our superintendent, the staff, the team. We've pushed back at some of the statewide guidance that was outdated. We've informed them with current data that we've seen as the largest district in Utah, and we've seen several revisions, like the quarantine revisions that we've now seen much better for kids, families, and teachers. The data says that we're not transmitting it at school. And so we've been able to attack some of those and inform some of those conversations and get some adjustments that you've seen the governor and the health departments put out. Any questions on that before I jump here to this next slide? On some of our return to learn, our return to play with our sports, trying to keep our students safe, our coaches safe, but yet still competing? Any questions on that, Mayor or council, before I move to the next segment?
You know, I don't have a question, but I would have a comment because I have been watching how this has been playing out right from March on. And I would just have to say, I feel like Alpine School District, I only have grandkids now in Alpine School District, but I feel like you guys have just threaded the needle perfectly. I, it's a moving target, COVID has been. When you get good data, you can make good decisions. But I am so pleased that our kids have a place to go. And I'm really just happy with how Alpine School District has, based on good data, they've made good decisions. But I wouldn't say they've been overly aggressive, but I would fight back on the notion of just keeping people at home. I think these kids need to be in school, my grandkids sure love it. They've had to be out for, because one of them got COVID and she was just young. And she was so happy to just get back in the classroom and see her friends and her teacher. And the teachers have adapted well, so it's not a question. It's just hopefully you'll take that as an incredible compliment that you have done everything necessary to get them in front of their teacher. I think it's so important.
And can I piggyback on that, Mayor? I received a phone call from a large school district in California and basically wanting to know how Alpine was doing it. They were very complimentary and I'm sure most of you have kept up on some of the news there and where schools are in California, they're way behind. Some of them haven't even opened at all, some have started to open with online. But the face-to-face, we feel, has been crucial. And I am so proud that our district has kind of stepped out on this. And we had some parents that were concerned in July and August when we were making the decision to open up. And it has been a great experience. And a lot of those concerns from our parents in the community have, their concerns have been assuaged and people feel confident and happy and, most importantly, safe to go back to school. And so I'm really proud that Alpine is on the map there of that we have really looked at the data and not taken counsel with fear, but with just data and going forward. So I'm proud as well.
I just want to add one more thing to piggyback on Sarah and Brad. I guess that would put me pretty high up on the list if I, or high on the. But I think the holistic approach that the district has taken, clearly our kids are there for the academic element and the learning that needs there, but the social things, but athletics, the way they have handled athletics. And I've been so proud of the kids and the way they have handled themselves. And I came into a soccer game once and I had my mask on my chin. And my daughter during warmups at the high school game turned and says, Dad, get your mask up or we're done. And so I just, the way all of the kids have embraced that and the way the coaches and the staff and the administration, I was so pumped to be on TV. Not myself personally, but our football game when our athletic director had to step out and say, you know, get your masks on or we're done, social distance. I just, I think we have demonstrated to the world that, you know what? If you're prepared and you come into this thing, it's going to be okay. I know our soccer team was the first one to play, our girls' soccer team was the first one to play in the United States after March. And I know our coach got a lot of ugly email, but those, I mean, the way the district has handled this holistically, I'm just so proud to be a part of it. I just think it's fantastic. So my kudos to all of you as well.
And I'd love to just jump in real quick and add to that as well. And one other thing to just say thank you for is our relationship with the gym space for our youth and recreational basketball right now. You know, it's one thing for the city recreation to go ahead and continue when we had outdoor sports, but indoor, I think that's even more crucial right now to be able to have that and to have that working relationship while still only one parent can attend. And we're working with Facebook streaming and things of that nature as coaches. I just feel very grateful that we have the ability to still use that space. So thanks for the proactive approach.
Okay, I'm finally gonna jump in. Everybody was so quick, I didn't get a chance. But I happen to have a child in elementary school and one in junior high and one in high school. So I've run the Gannett through this COVID over the last couple of years that we've done this couple of years. It feels like a couple of years, but really I guess it's been about a year. But I also am super, super grateful that we've had any chance for online learning to the point that I've said to so many people, even if we only get those two days a week on those times when our schools had to go into modified, even that is so much better for our students to have some sort of face-to-face interaction with their teacher. It's just a world of difference. So for a board that their goal is to educate students, I think you guys have done a phenomenal job. And I have expressed that to anybody who will listen to me, that I'm so grateful. We live in a place where you were willing to trust the teachers, trust the students to wear masks, trust the data, and look at schools at an individual basis instead of doing something for the entire district as a whole, but instead looking, all of those elements, so much work for everybody, and I'm so appreciative of that. I do have one question, not about this, but something you said earlier. I'm just wondering, when you said about teacher turnover, let's see, you said you had around 534 new teachers this year. I'm wondering how that compares to historically years past? Have you been seeing a trend either way?
Yeah, great, great question. Last year, I believe, we had just under 700 teachers. So we had fewer turnover this year than the prior year. And I can get history, but I want to say over the last five years, we're in that 500 to 700 number of new teachers each year.
Okay.
About 35% of our teaching workforce is within their first five years. And again, when you think about our demographics of our teaching workforce, over 70% are female. We live right by two universities. And again, you have a spouse finish up a degree and they end up moving out of our community or taking a job somewhere else or starting a family. We see a lot of that because of that demographic with the two universities right here. It's great for the supply line of new teachers coming in. We have wonderful teacher preparation programs at both Utah Valley and at BYU and great partnerships with both those universities. Alpine's a member of that partnership with both BYU and with UBU. And so I think that's a great thing, but also something we always watch. I know Sarah could probably talk about our school board felt like, what can we do to keep teachers in the classroom and keep them in Alpine School District? So our board this last year, we took a little bit of money from a special program the legislature created. We contributed a little local resource and we're offering incentives to our teachers to stay teaching. And there's different eligibility times. If they stay for five years and start their sixth year of teaching, then the board deposits an incentive amount into their 401K. We're looking at things like that, but the data is informing the action to try to, even though we have two universities and a lot of female teachers, we want to do what we can to keep them, not just on our team or get them on our team, but keep them on our team and continue to invest in them so we can better support your kids at all three levels, Stacy.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
And I don't have any kids or grandkids in the district, but my kids all went to school here. But the things that I hear from the public have all been good. So I just echo what the other members have said.
Thank you. Great, great comments. And we're just grateful for the opportunity. We've made some mistakes along the way. We've learned a lot and changed a lot, but we're grateful to serve such wonderful families and people like you. So if you're okay, Mayor, I'm going to move on to that next slide. This is something we're proud about in Alpine. We had a great public-private partnership. We had three major companies donate a million dollars and several others donate tens of thousands. And a lot of individuals, even students, bringing bags of coins that donated to our new space center. And we have a 40-foot dome, a planetarium, that's embedded within one of our elementary schools. We have world-class flight simulators that are just unbelievable. If you or your kids or your grandkids have been to our space center in the past, you gotta come back. I do know that they're having shows, they are social distancing. But what a tremendous asset for our students and their learning and creativity and love of the possible, what's in their future. Just a great priority that our board set and our team was able to carry out. And so grateful again for the significant donors that we had that stepped up to enhance what we're able to do with our taxpayer dollars. And Mayor, just down the road, if you'd like to take a mission with your council or if the city manager of Dave's online, if you'd like to get some of your staff over, once we're open, our simulators are open, we'd love to get you and see how you work together with some space simulation. Or if you'd like to come over and just go to a planetarium show. We have a co-op with the Clark Planetarium so we can share material. And just, we have this in our backyard and just so pleased and excited about this for our kids.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll turn now, Shane's gonna take over the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Rob. Thanks for sharing the information, Mayor. I would just like to take a moment and publicly thank you and your council, your staff, just for the great things you do for American Fork. We've been here the last 16 years, raising our children, family, serving as a principal in the community and other responsibilities. And it's just you run an excellent city. So thank you for all of your efforts to continue to create a great place to serve and live and raise families in. So appreciate that.
Thank you.
The chart in front of you just shows our enrollment trends, changes this year. These are somewhat reflective of what we're seeing across the district. We saw a decline in enrollment, particularly in our elementary schools as parents weigh the decision about whether or not to send their kids back or do homeschool or do other options. And so we've seen more of that decline in our elementary schools. Could be reflective of parents feeling a little bit more confident to homeschool their kid in that curriculum than in secondary. You'll see the high school has significant growth there, the junior high is down a little bit. And then Barrett kind of bucked that trend of elementary schools and we see an increase of enrollment there. But there's just a chart that kind of gives you a sense. I would say overall where we're at in American Fork is stable and growing with the additional housing that's coming in. We see Greenwood up and they're down a little bit this year because of that, but we made some boundary adjustments as well there. But we anticipate increased growth in Greenwood, where we rebuilt that. We increased the square footage of that in anticipation of enrollment growth in that area. So any questions on enrollment?
A quick question there, Shane, if I could jump in.
Absolutely.
AF Junior High, I've heard different rumors that it's a closed campus or it's open. And, you know, I live in a part of town where I believe we're supposed to go to Mountain Ridge, but then they go to AF High School. And just because of, you know, my wife and I feel that because of the social aspect and who your friends are makes such a big difference during that timeframe and kind of continuing with that same set of friends, the high school have had our kids at the junior high. But is that still available or is that closed down now?
No, it's still an option there, particularly those students that are boundaried for AF High School. We have allowed that to be open in the past. They are out of area because they live in a different junior high boundary. So they need to fill out an out-of-area transportation isn't provided because of that. There is some concerns about declining enrollment in Mountain Ridge. And so we're looking at ways to maybe adjust that so that they have the student population there to provide all of the programs necessary to benefit those students, but that has not changed.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions about enrollment? Okay, Rob, if you can advance to the next slide. This is just a rough estimate of the capital dollars invested in American Fork schools from bond resources and from other capital resources. So I've just put the amount that's been spent, just a rough estimate over the last five years and given a sense there of what those costs are. Some of the big ticket items, I think total there, if you were to add that up, it's about $35 million. Obviously Greenwood was rebuilt. We think that's a beautiful new facility down there to serve that population of American Fork and allow for increased growth there. We've done some work at Barrett and Forbes. Legacy has a new roof. Shelley is just some general upkeep there. Quite a significant amount was put into AF High School. We're very proud of these facilities, that playing facilities, opportunities for extracurricular activities. Really one of the best layouts and best facilities in the state in terms of extracurricular, football, soccer field, baseball has completely been redone there. AF Junior, we did some additional work on roofing and security with cameras. And then part of that asphalt was the cracked seal and fill on the general parking lot and then adding that additional parking where the satellite unit used to be. Instead of having that to be a gravel, we were able to pave that. And then some HV And then some HVAC work at Dan Peterson. So we continue to try and be good stewards of our schools and make them inviting places for students to go and support community needs as well. I would say we don't have a slide on here, but just future, we realize the need to finish the remodel of American Fork High School. That will be something that needs to be on our radar and consideration for future bond projects. And then in time, we'll need to look at Barrett Elementary as it gets a little bit older as a possible rebuild or boundary changing there. So that's kind of the status of the facilities in AF. Any questions?
Just a quick comment that I, I had, and that is on the rebuild of the high school. We talked, I mentioned a little bit about how great it is to use your gyms right now for our basketball programs. And it's one of the only high schools I think that has, is it four gyms now? And there's maybe some talk of taking the old gym and turning it to a classroom. Any political sway there to advocate for maintaining those? I would definitely be there just as we continue to grow as a city. And gym space is a precious commodity. And I can't remember how many high school junior jazz teams we turned down every year just because there's not enough available space. I know that's hard to balance with budgets and school numbers and enrollment. Your main priority is education. I totally get that. But anything we could do to, to help maintain gym space would be awesome.
Yeah, Rob, I appreciate that. That is a sacred commodity there to get gym space. We've looked at different plans, at different options. We'll consider, continue to look at that, to evaluate that. Our typical model is two auxiliary gyms and a main gym. We're also looking at just different ways to utilize that. Maybe some flooring there that allows us some different uses in those gyms other than just the basketball. Some of those programs are spring sports, lacrosse and soccer, baseball. They put some wear and tear on those hardwood floors. So we're looking at options of more multipurpose uses there. But that's something that the school has really shared with us. They're anxious for the remodel, but not anxious to lose a gym. And so it's that, that give and take there of providing the facilities that we need, need to, to accommodate the needs. So it's, I would say, continue to advocate for that. As we go through that process, we'll get public input on possibilities there. But it's something that we're aware of, that we feel is a priority for the community, not only educational space, but the extracurricular space as well. So balancing that with budget needs and constraints there would be, will be a challenge, but something that we're aware of.
Who knows? That old gym might even clarify as a historical site. Maybe there's some grant money jokingly saying that, but.
Yeah, we're just a little bit nervous about how tall those walls are and whether or not they're reinforced and some challenges there seismically. So it, it may be historical in a good way and a bad way, so. Any other questions or comments on capital projects? Okay, thank you, Rob. I'll go ahead and mute.
Thank you, Shane. Just a couple of things, Mayor. I don't know if this picture on the right looks familiar. We did send out an updated document. It's a new document. It takes a 200-page comprehensive financial report and shrinks it down to what we call a popular financial report. It's about 15 pages, lots of charts and graphs. But hopefully you saw that a week or two ago. And we also sent a copy over, I believe, to Dave. But the whole point of this slide is we continue to look for ways to inform and engage our stakeholders. We want people to know what we're trying to do with their money. It's their schools and it's your children and grandchildren. And so these are just a couple of our, our most recent documents. All of these are on the webpage as well. I mentioned that teacher retention on that left side. And the retention incentive, again, our school board. It's the only board I know that's taken that kind of an aggressive step to retain great teachers and to recognize some disparities in the state retirement system that the legislature enacted a number of years ago. But again, these are just documents that we're trying to share to engage and inform and make simple the back office, the finance of a school district and schools a little easier for people to understand. So if you have any feedback on that or those type of documents, things that you see as council members and representatives, elected officials, that would be helpful, we'll be happy to take that feedback and see what we can do to continue to build that understanding and share information with our public better. Any questions or thoughts there? Okay, I think that is the last slide. The last thing we just wanted to do is, and I'm going to stop sharing my screen. That's my granddaughter. I love talking about her all the time. But what can we do to support you? We always try to end with just open and, and I've appreciated council member Shelton or council member Barnes or council member Carol in the past have just said, hey, here's some things. Can, we've got a question about this and can you take this back and circle back with us? We'll just pause and just leave it open for you, Mayor and council. What can we take back and improve upon or address? How can we continue our great partnership with you and try to make that even better?
Well, I won't lead out here. I'll let the council.
I jump in just real quick, Rob. I, I think we may have talked about this. It was a few years ago, but the entrance there to Shelley Elementary School is a unique drop-off location area. The way that was designed has created some traffic issues. And we've had various residents come and, and talk about, you know, how do we improve that? And of course, that's a partnership between when they hit the public roads and how we handle the traffic from there to where they're dropping off and hitting the, the school district property. And so I think that would just be one to look at. I, you know, hate to spend money right now to solve an issue that hasn't caused any accidents, but perhaps as we look at any improvements to that school, that could be maybe redesigned to fit some of the other schools like Forbes or Deerfield or others that don't have the too small queuing bays, but have one large queuing bay that kind of help out with that right and left-hand conflicts as they're, they're leaving the school. And then the only other one that I, I could think of is, I'll toss this out there. I don't know if it's the sacred one that is a little controversial or not, but you know, we're looking at a possible RDA on the, or EDA or whatever they call them nowadays, CRAs. You know, whatever acronym the, the state has given us at that point. But really believe there's a great chance of partnership there as well as our downtown area. And I know those are difficult decisions for you to look at, but would love to continue those discussions and see what we could do. I think we're getting to a critical point in both locations that we kind of need to come to a decision on those that is well-informed. But, you know, I think the longer we wait, it puts us in a more difficult position, so.
That's, I, I would like to ask that as well, Rob. I think there is tremendous benefit for both the district and the city, obviously, for downtown, but most especially right now as we look at that new district that's growing like crazy down on Second South, down by the, in the TOD, by the train station. We could really use some cooperative help from the school district with that CRA and, and getting that going. I know it seemed like when we talked about it before, there was some reluctance based on an election coming up, et cetera. But I mean, those things have proved very beneficial for, for both entities. And I would love to see us have some, some cooperative talks about that and about the possibility of that going forward.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Taylor and Shelton. We, on the Shelley, I have that. We've talked about that multiple times. We've made adjustments to that area, traffic flow. I'll bet our board member Beeson could probably talk about that better than I, maybe even Dr. Farnsworth because he lives over there. But that's something, we do have some limits just because of where the building sits relative to the road that Deerfield and others, when you have a clean slate to start from, that school when it was built many years ago, we've added on to it, made some improvements. But we, we do have some limits that you, if I was to pull up even Legacy and take a look at that, the school sits a little further back on the site. And that gives you that better queuing and parking in the front. We like to design schools that have at least 700 to 800 feet of frontage, again, to address the very thing that has been mentioned here. But that's something we continue to look at, open to work with you. We've worked on some things on First West. We've done some things over there together. I think even on Fifth North as well with some fencing and some retaining. But I've got that on the, I like to call it the alphabet increment discussion, whether it's CDA, URA, RDA, EDA, whatever the latest. There's a new one that they, they, they're talking about. I appreciate meeting with your city manager and Mayor Frost. I actually have also met with the developer and gave them some information relative to criteria our board follows. And again, we're, we're just happy to work with you. It's something that we have done with you and we'll, we'll continue to work with you on those items, so. Anything else from members of the council?
I do have a couple of things. The first one is as a city council member, people are often concerned about growth in general. And not knowing how things are done, they, people often say to me, well, there's no schools in that area. How are you going to build a school? So as a council member, I'm wondering if you can give me a little bit of an overview of how you recognize growth in certain areas and plan for it? Just so that I have that background while I'm explaining to other people what is being done for this.
Okay. I, I can take a stab at that. And then Shane, if you can jump in or Sarah, if I, I've missed anything. In the fall of each year, Councilmember Carol, we, we start with an enrollment projection. And that data is on our website. I would encourage you to take a look at that. We're one of the few school districts nationwide that do a comprehensive projection of enrollment. In that book, we also look at charter school enrollment. We look at housing data that we get from our cities. We look at birth data. We look at census data. We look at, there's about five different data sets that we use to underpin our projection of how many students will come to our schools into a five-year, into the future, five years. We also have our move-up numbers. So we have our graduating seniors and then our projected, based on birth data, our incoming kindergarteners. So that's the basis really for all school district planning is that enrollment projection book. Very comprehensive. And in that document, what it will do is it was, it will clearly articulate what areas of our community are growing, not just from the city building permit standpoint, but for the actual number of people by school. And so as we see a particular school, and let's say it's Greenwood, four years into the future because of the growth on Second, as was mentioned by, I think, Councilmember Taylor. As you see that growth come in that area or even the growth Fifth, Sixth, Seventh East and what you see on that side of the city, we see those students coming to their schools. And we see those schools grow. When those schools grow to about 900 to 1,000 students, that's the point at which we know that we need to start talking about plans for an additional boundary change or an additional school, a physical facility. And so at that point, we involve our school folks, Dr. John Patton, Dr. Farnsworth, work on those processes. And we're out, we inform our real estate acquisition plans, which is part of my responsibility. And we work as a team to say, we need to acquire a parcel in this community or in this area based on that projected growth. And then we monitor that over time. And sometimes we get it right, sometimes we don't. That's why these kind of meetings with you is critical. When I meet with Mayor Frost and, and your city administrator, with Dave, it's, it's important that we talk about those type of things to inform those decisions early enough that we can say, okay, we're going to buy property. Here's where that school growth can be supported from. And here are other potential needs to meet the needs of kids. So anyway, that's kind of the process. And then once that, that is done, then the school board, again, gathers feedback from the community, says, we have X need public. Here are the projects that we believe that we need to do. Are you willing to give us some of your money to do these projects? And then when we successfully pass that, then we get to work and build those facilities. So Shane and Sarah, anything I've left out that you'd like to add?
I would just add a little bit, Councilmember Carol, if, if you want to refer to that projection book that's on the website, or I can send a couple of these slides to you, pages to you. Page 48 and 49, address enrollment. Rob's team does a great job of breaking this down by city. And so it'll give you five-year projections for all of the schools that are in AF, even if they're partially, like Cedar Ridge has 10% of its students that attend from AF. You'll see those projections and where they're, just to give you a general idea. In total enrollment, right now, we're about 8,750. In five years, we anticipate being at 8,467. So there's a little bit of a slight decline there. That is offset. We are a little bit of more of an aging community, but also have new growth coming into the community. So it stays fairly stable. Greenwood, as we anticipated, we built that 10,000 square feet larger than anticipated originally planned because we see an estimated increase of about 100 students there over the next five years. The high school will stay about where it is, as will the junior high. You'll see a little bit of fluctuation in some of the elementary schools. But overall, I would say stable with a slight decline is what we anticipate for American Fork area in terms of enrollment. I don't know if that helps you.
That helps a ton, yeah.
About the process, but there are some pages in that book, particular to the AF community, and that's page 48 and 49 on that enrollment book.
Okay, that helps a ton. Thank you. The, the other thing I just wanted to mention was when they mentioned the CRA, you are well-versed in how that works and, and what it would mean for your district. But from the city side, especially on the south side of the city, that's a newer part and the infrastructure to put that in place is not there. And if we want to continue to see growth there in a, in a way that will increase the land values, I don't see any way at this point that we can get it without having some sort of partnership with the school district. We're looking at other options, of course, but I, I, I haven't heard yet of a good one. So I just kind of want to put that bug in your ear from me as well, that we're looking at the projections of how we're supposed to grow and put the infrastructure in place. And by infrastructure, of course, I mean the water lines and the sewer lines and the, the road and, and that sort of infrastructure. We're still limited on that with what we have right now.
And just as the school district looks ahead years in advance for the growth and things like that, you need to also look ahead. Maybe take a few years out of getting a minimal amount of property tax, looking at what you will get in the future, five and 10 years from now. And in the future, it will help everybody.
Thank you. We do try to make those projections as well relative to property tax. And Councilmember Carol, thank you for your comments too on that, the CRA and the TOD area of American Fork. And again, we, we're, we're partners. We work with you. And we, we will continue to do so.
The other comment I was going to make is thank you for your big transparency through the years with the city and with the residents. It's very helpful. The more people know, the more we all feel like we're on the same team. Thank you. Uh, it's very helpful. The more people know, the more we all feel like we're on the same team. Thank you.
Any other thoughts if Mayor, if, if not?
I will, let me just end if I could with just a quick comment and that is, um. I've always appreciated the open door approach whenever we've needed to talk with you, Rob, or the superintendent. Although you serve multiple communities, it feels like your home base, you're here, you're part of American Fork and so. Hopefully, if there's anything we can do better to support you, whether that be. Crossing guards, law enforcement, for whatever purposes might need to be done. It's, it's been kind of a. Topsy turvy year with that, but we're open to suggestions. Now or in the future, I know you, know you can call me. So I, I just appreciate the open door approach and I will say this too. I have never met with, uh. With you or administration where they haven't recognized. The sacred fact that who it is they serve. And who is paying the bill. And, 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 and I think our council and our staff understand those same elements. So I feel like we're in common ground here in the fact that it is the taxpayers that we are here to represent. And every dollar is precious and I, I can definitely vouch for the city and I, and even when I've been around you, it just, it's always. Held out there as something that is not taken for granted. It is important. And every dollar counts. And so therefore we share facilities when we can. Um, and we work together because that's what's expected of us from the taxpayer. So I really appreciate that mindset as well, so.
Mayor, well, just one final, can you give, uh, our board member? I was gonna ask Sarah if maybe she'd wrap up for us?
Wrap it up.
Well, let's see, wrapping it up. I am just, I, I kind of did it with everything that's been said so far. I think it's just so productive. When we're able to have an open dialogue with our cities, it just makes things so much better and we all are. Invested in the education of our children. It has everything to do with the city and the progress of the city. And so I, I really do need to tell you how much, uh, we are so appreciative of everything the city does and in particular. With our police officers and, um, having them in the schools. It's been. A wonderful experience to kind of get to know every one of them better. Uh, there was a time that my husband used to teach, um, grammar to your police officers. I think the chief of police had him come in a couple of times to help them so that those reports were looking really. Grammatically correct and fun to read. I don't, I, I, I just have been so appreciative. You know, we had a house fire just three weeks ago. We're still living in a hotel. And I will tell you, even the firemen were so wonderful. I'm just so proud of American Fork City. I just love that. Uh, I live here and I get to work with the district, but being a part of a city which I consider like family and I think. Uh, all of you, Mayor and City Council are doing such a wonderful job of bringing our citizens together and. Um, being able to include our youth in a lot of the programs. I think we have a wonderful, we have such wonderful things going on in American Fork. So I'm proud to represent that area and I, uh, this area and I hope you know that. As a board member, I mean Brad, you know, you've reached out to me a couple of times. You, you know, and Stacy, you've called me a couple of times. We can talk and anything you need, I'm happy to do whatever I can. I'm, I'm so grateful to work with Rob and also Dr. Farnsworth. I think they. Um, have the same. The same mission that we all do, which is to build a, a better organization for families. Uh, we'll never, our cities, our districts will never be as strong as our families. And so thank you for everything that you're doing. How's that for a wrap up? Was that pretty good?
That was pretty good. Yeah. We won't wanna, we don't wanna go one more thing that we gotta end on that one, so.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate you being here. You're, we're welcome back at any time.
Thank you.
You.
Thank all of you. Appreciate it.
Okay, we will now move on to item number two, which is a review of five-year street improvement plan. Um, Scott, I'm going to have you just kind of start it off and we have Rebecca with us. And any other staff, but why don't you just kind of get this started, um, and, and maybe. The mindset behind this and then I'm sure Rebecca, we're gonna see Rebecca today and hear from her big time.
Perfect. Uh, Mayor Council, glad to visit with you today. I'm gonna use good grammar too and, and make sure I do that well. Um, I need to be able to share my screen. Uh, I don't know who's got it, but, ah, there we go. There we go. Okay, bear with me then while I get this PowerPoint going. All right, can it, is it popping up there? Is it visible?
Yep, we see it.
Fantastic. So, um, just a couple of little, I guess, uh, things I have here that I wanted to go over and just kind of go through and. Uh, got a couple of slides. I, I want to visit with you a little bit about the. The five-year infrastructure plan that was, was sent to you recently. So I want to first set the stage and just kind of. Do a very brief history review where we talked about it a little bit, uh, well, actually quite a bit. Extensively at our budget retreat about a year ago. Um, one of the things that we discussed there that, uh, you count that, uh, you members, that all the members of the council. Um, directed us as staff to do was to make sure that as we prepared this, that we were considering all infrastructure. And not just the roads. Um, one of the big topics of discussion that we also went over was, um. Making sure that we knew, are we planning to the, or budgeting to the plan or planning to the budget? You probably remember that, uh, that discussion. So, um. In doing so, um, excuse me, let me go back a, a little bit. Uh, one of the things that we talked about, uh, as well was that the original plan. Had, um, some costs that were in there that ended up being quite a bit low, uh, for a couple of reasons. Uh, one, costs have risen and, uh, the costs in the, uh, that we're using in estimates for. The plan that we've submitted to you now. Use current, use data that we've gotten from current bids. Um, that original plan did not, uh, consider all the underground infrastructure, the pipes. Whatever, uh, other maybe things that need to be considered, the other infrastructure. And, um, it didn't include enough, at least for soft costs. And by that I mean design, geotechnical work, surveying, construction management, inspection. So there were some of those things that needed to be included. Uh, as we did the review, you'll see that what we've sent to you based on all those things is quite different than that original plan. Not only that, but then the original tenure plan also considered, um. Funding rates that were quite a bit higher than, than what is actually been able to be funded by the city. And so the direction that we received clearly from the council was we need to plan to the budget. The budget is what it is and we need a plan to do all we can with that budget rather than. Let's go find whatever budget we can to do whatever, uh, the plan is required. So let me tell you a little bit about what has been done so far. Um, we've done about two point six three miles of major work. By contractors and by that, what I mean, and this is in the last couple of years. Uh, this is rebuilt, reconstructions, full-depth reclamation. Where we're hiring a contractor to go out and essentially rebuild, uh, a road. Um, that's about two percent of the city. In addition to that. Um, we've done approximately, this is round figures, twenty-five miles of preventative, uh, maintenance. Uh, mostly by city staff. So that's about twenty-one percent of the city. That's things like chip seals that Eric and his road crew does. Uh, that includes crack sealing work. So some of it. Is just crack seal, some of it's, uh, chip seal. Uh, some of it's some of the other work that he does and, and I'm also including in this. Work that is the high-density mineral bond, sometimes we call HA five. That's done by a contractor, but it's preventative maintenance and so I'm throwing it in this category. That's a significant amount more, uh, that we've done. Um, don't get too excited if you would though, um, that, hey, that means that if we do that. Then in five years, we're done. Yay. It's like an oil change. You gotta keep doing it over and over and over of, over again. But the good part about preventative maintenance, as you've heard me say, is that it is like an oil change. It's cheap compared to a rebuild of your. Car engine and you get a lot of bang for, for the buck, literally. So, um, just to give you some data there. So over the last eight years, went back a little bit. About sixteen point nine million dollars over the last eight years. Roughly an average of, of, uh, two point one million dollars per year has been spent on roads. The historical number for the pavement management, the in-house budget that we use for the things that. I described that Eric does is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That's. Varied a little bit, but that's generally what the average has been. So here's just a map, uh, that I could pull up, um. And look in a little bit closer detail, put a little life link there for, uh, for myself if we want to click on that and look at it. Um, in detail, but this is what is on our website now, showing from July to, oops, I didn't mean to do that, July to June. Uh, of last year of the work that we've, uh, done so far. And you can see we've, uh, got down here, a breakdown of the different kinds of treatments. That each section has received. You know, when you look at it, you see that, man, we're starting to cover a fair amount of the city. Particularly with a lot of those, uh, preventative maintenance, uh, issues, the seal codes, the crack seals, the chip seals and so forth. So projects that are being done then now, these are ones that either have recently finished or nearing completion. The, just a sample of a couple of ones. Seven hundred North, ninety-eight percent complete, just a few little minor things that. Still need to be done. Six hundred East, uh, in front of the high school is going to be done. Uh, in conjunction with that water line project. That's a, a major project. Just a small sample, a couple of projects, Pacific and Center Street Chip Seal were done by our crews last fall and summer. Those, I listed those just because they're two of the more visible ones, uh, that, uh, in-house crews were able to do recently. These are some of the projects that, uh, were done and, and are being done in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Uh, and as we get these complete, we'll start move them over to the other map and. They'll get replaced with, uh, with new projects to show. Again, this is on our website. Uh, at, uh, americanfork.gov/streets. So the upcoming plan, uh, let's first talk about some of the assumptions that. That we made before I really get into the plan. Some of the assumptions. That were made, I don't have these listed on, you figure rather than reading to you, I'll just kind of, I've got a couple of speakers notes up here to remind me of. A couple of things I want to mention. So. One assumption in that plan that, uh, has been submitted to you is that we would have an average. Estimated available budget for those major projects, uh, of about two and a half million dollars per year. And that we would then also have an annual pavement maintenance budget of about two hundred and fifty thousand again. That's. What it's traditionally historically been and that we would keep it roughly in that same, same category. Another assumption is that as part of these projects, uh, additional funding from water. Sewer pressurized irrigation, storm drain, uh, would be used to complete those projects in holistic way. The big one is the water. That is the one that is, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in the. Next couple of slides about holistic manner and what we're, we're wanting to make sure that we do. So, um. Bunchery numbers are used to establish project timing and then these segments are done to spread around the city. Uh, we want to make sure that. We're not all focusing on one area to the detriment neglect of other areas. The citizens need to be able to see that there are things. Taking place all over the city. Um, and another assumption is, is that sometimes the project timing may need to be delayed. Or otherwise adjusted due to unforeseen factors. There could be things that come up and so. There's gotta be a little bit of flexibility in it. So I have a link to the plan. Let me click on that real quick. And bring it up. This is the document that I understand you have all received. Hopefully it should be. Loading right now. And those are some of the assumptions that, uh, that I, I reiterated. And here are the, the projects that we've got for each year and I can zoom in, uh, look at them a little bit more detail. Uh, if you would like. Um, what I think I'd like to do is, is maybe hit a couple of, of items, flipper on my, um. Presentation here and then go back to these if you want to talk to, uh, talk about a, a little bit more, um, in detail. So. Let me go ahead and close that out for just a second. And the PM road list, uh, is, is on there as well and let me, uh, let me bring that up actually. This is the map. Need to drag this over here. Uh, just want to confirm is a, can you all see a map that's shown up? Okay, terrific. These are the, the, all the roads that are in that plan. This is the attachment that show them. Uh, and the roads that are, uh, shown on this map, but not in that table one. Are the ones that Eric will be doing, uh, chip seals, uh, HA fives. Um, crack seals, all those other things. So all of the roads that you see on this drawing though. The plan will be for them to receive some sort of treatment, uh, within this five-year plan. Go ahead and minimize that again and, and continue on. So let me talk a little bit about the criteria for choosing these roads. Some of the things that we, um. Took into account in doing these things. One of them was traffic counts. This is one factor. It's certainly not. Uh, the only factor, maybe even the deciding factor, but. We tried to do as best we could prioritize roads that are visible, roads that get used more. Uh, and to at least have them in there as something that, uh. We, uh, we really focused on those roads as much as we could. Well, again, wanted to make sure we spread the love around the city so that, uh, all the, the city saw something going on in their general. Uh, neighborhoods, even if it's not all the roads.
We absolutely.
And Scott, speaking of spread the love, we also spread the, the love of detours and road closures.
Absolutely.
You know, so that we're not concentrating in one part of the city and that, that part of the city is just completely locked down, gridlocked for a while. So get in, get a project done and, and, and move on.
Perfect.
But then we, but then we come back, um, later on to hit other sections of that quadrant.
Correct. So another criteria, the criterion that went into, um, choosing roads was the remaining service life. That's a big one. Is to be able to look at that calculation and to be, make sure that we understand. What is the appropriate treatment here? Is this a road that essentially, as I said here, is it salvageable? If it is, if it's salvageable now, then we really want to make sure, and by salvage would be mean it's not. To deteriorate to the point where it's a major, uh, a major rebuild. Uh, is it eligible where if we do some preventative maintenance or some early intervention, low-cost treatment? Can we keep it that way and delay in it for a long time, any major work? Because if it's eligible and salvageable and eligible for preventative maintenance now. We need to hit it soon or else it may not be in the future if we don't do what we're supposed to do. Uh, if we neglect the preventative maintenance. We also took into account utility conditions. And that was one of the things we wanted to make sure that we were looking at things in, again, in a holistic manner. Um, quite often, and let me talk a little bit about other infrastructure, a couple of things to remember, but quite often. Bad roads and bad water lines go together. If you see a road that's, you know, older and it's in pretty decent shape, it's usually, usually. A pretty good indicator that the water and, uh, other infrastructure beneath it's in good shape. Whereas if the water lines, uh, been leaking, they're bad, they're in terrible shape, typically the roads go together. This is not always the case, but I will tell you, it's almost always. One of the other things to consider with the other infrastructure is, is that PI cuts did do a lot of, of damage to the road. We're grateful for a PI system, but there's no question, a lot of those cuts have sagged. Uh, they just, when you cut a new road, cut asphalt, no matter what patch or how good a patch. They just, when you cut a new road, cut asphalt, no matter what patch or how good a patch you do, you do deteriorate the life. And we have quite a few of those. Road damage is rarely due to bad sewers or storm drains. It happens, but it's rare. It is almost always the water or the PI. That causes the problem, either a PI cut or more often than not a water leak. Perfect example is is. Cayman Boulevard by the high school. The road's a mess because the water lines mess and they just, they go together, so. Another, but the thing is, is the road conditions are what we see, so they usually get the attention. So. That being the case, admittedly, this infrastructure plan that we have. Might look and smell like the roads were the thing driving the train. They were, they were, they're what is. Visible is what you see, it's what gets the attention because. As I said, if the line, the water line is bad, the road probably is too. So a couple of key best practices, a couple of these I hit on a little bit. But again, we want to do the projects in a holistic manner. So in all of the road conditions, both the things that we've done over the last couple of years. And the things we're looking at doing over the next couple of years. We made sure we had an assessment where we got down, looked at it, talked with Jay, talked with the rest of the crew across the street. About what are the conditions of what you're seeing with the road? Jay, how many times have you been out there in the last? Couple of years fixing water leak, were they major leaks? What did you see when you were down there? Rotted line where? You knew you were patching something that was going to blow again, or is it something that maybe was just a? A bad joint from a construction flaw that once you fix it, yeah, you'd probably be pretty good. We had those kinds of in-depth discussions with him for and and for all the planning and all the major projects. We typically don't do have too much of those discussions for things like chip seals and other preventative maintenance. For one, with those kinds of projects, you're only hitting the surface anyways, so. We're not going down that deep. They're a cheap, relatively cheap. Non-invasive surface treatment. So you're not doing much work below the surface anyways and again, not to. Sound like a broken record, but. If they're eligible for a chip seal because they're in pretty good shape, odds are the water lines in pretty good shape too. And we, the other thing is is the is the corollary, it's kind of the converse really that also holds true is is that generally. Within the city, we're not going and replacing water lines. Where we don't also address the road conditions as well. It's usually not a key, best key practice to to do where you just dig the water line up, replace the water line. And put put a, you know, partial patch or whatever, just to make it good. If there's a reason you're doing it, there's probably you need to do the road too. The one exception. Is that where we have done this over the last couple of years is when there's outside money that comes in that specifically for. Water line replacement. Let me be specifically CDBG. A lot of those you're, we're getting water or money for water lines and nothing else and. We have quite often not gone and done a full. Road project in conjunction with CDBG. Not saying we haven't ever, but not consistently. So again, what about other infrastructure? Let's talk about the CIP for a minute. So. In the CIP with with what we we budget. We've budgeted like this current fiscal year, the one that we're in right now. A hundred thousand dollars, I'm sorry, I should have put the clarifier. This is for water line replacement. And this is not for going and fixing the leaks. This is for proactively go and fix. Water lines that we know have deteriorated. Our needs greatly exceed that. We have asked for more in the past and I'm gonna ask for more than that amount in the future. But all of that money has gone to do utility work that is associated with the road project. Skipped one there, sorry, that finger on the keyboard there. So for sewer and storm drains. What we've, we've generally because as I said, the sewer lane, the sewer mains. And the storm drains typically aren't the cause of the road damage that when we're doing these. Road projects, we're usually not touching the sewer or the storm drain. We are still having the conversation to assess the conditions. But generally, the response has been the sewer and the storm drain seem to be in decent shape. And so we're going to focus on replacing the things that are damaging the roads, which is the water lines. For sewer and storm drains, the amount of money that we are putting in is we do have annual sewer lining. That we've been having about three hundred thousand a year and semi-annual bursting projects, about five hundred thousand dollars every other year. Is what we are doing to. Replace some of those infrastructure. One of the things that especially the the annual lining that. Has been really good is it's places where we know we're getting water leaking in into the sewer. It's not the problem leaking out but leaking in. And then we get billed for it. Those projects have paid for themselves. Many times over as the city sewer bills have. Held remarkably flat in the in spite of tremendous growth. So anyway, I don't want to get too off on on that, but just to let you know that is what. We have been budgeting and receive budget for each year for those. So what does this mean? Well, again, it means that the water projects, they should always overlap with major road work. We have to work within the confines of budget. There's a lot more work that we would do, more funding would be awesome. It would be awesome. It means completing more roads and completing them sooner. Or to be grammatically correct for Barbara, we would get it done more sooner if we could have more funding. Love to, but we do work within the confines of of the. More quick, that's even betterer. So I like that. The plan must be flexible. This is the other thing and it is. Very flexible to where with this money, we could swap out roads if some unforeseen condition comes. Or there's council direction that we'd rather do a different road first for whatever reason, there are things happen, changes happen. As I like to say, change is inevitable except from vending machines and we know that we're going to have change. So we need to be flexible and believe we are. A couple of things to remember, with this funding, we don't move the dial on the overall city RSL. With this plan that we have, that does not. Make it so that, hey, we're increasing our RSL, it's getting better overall as a city. In fact, it's not actually even holding steady. It still goes down. But it goes down not as fast by any means if we didn't, if we did nothing. So it does slow it down and all this work has definitely slowed down the overall city RSL. Communication is key. I was appreciative of the school district. And their presentation, we're going to be working very, very closely with them. This project, there's no construction project that is pain-free. It's always painful. And there will be disruptions, there will be detours. It'll affect the high school. That project is not a three-month project, so there's no way to do it. During the summer when school's out, it's completely impossible to avoid disrupting. Traffic while school's in session. But we'll do all that we can. We're more closely with the contractor. Once we have their final schedule, we'll be communicating it. Rebecca couldn't correct me if I'm wrong, but our plan is not to have it shut ever. So there will always be access, but there may be. Detours, there may be other things where we're having to move people over to one side of the road, they move them back and and there will be. There will be disruptions, but we'll do what we can to bring it along, communicate using these tools, others. And so forth. I'm sure there are many, many, many questions and I need to pull up my. Thing here so I can see you all again. I I got rid of your your visible. You're not there. I don't know what to say. There you are, there you are.
Couldn't see my face when I was reacting to what you were saying?
I couldn't, I'm sorry, I couldn't. And or when Dave was doing the, you know, I didn't see any of that either, so. I was looking at my screen, actually trying to look right at the camera still. What questions?
That's the best way to operate. You're not distracted.
There you go.
Just real quick, Scott, thank you for that presentation and going through that. Obviously, you know, I've I've been able to sit down with you and Rebecca quite often and and go through the. Plan in detail. I know council members have had questions. Council member Shelton sent in some questions as well. I think we covered quite a few of those, but may have others as well. And there may be other council members that something that was discussed just now. Will spur some kind of a comment or a question, so be happy to answer all of those. I just want to touch base. Just circle back with with what you have explained is that we have a budget. And we're trying to fit our plan within that budget. In general, we are trying to hit about two point five million dollars a year towards road improvements. Plus, we we're allocating about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year towards pavement management. So the pavement management is the stuff again like Scott explained that Eric would do. And then the the pavement projects, the the rebuilds, the overlays, you know, those larger projects. We we put those out to bid and the council approves those and then we award that to a contractor. And so on average, we we've like Scott has has detailed, it's been about two point one million. Here's the issue is we get about one million dollars a year from class B and C road funds. In addition to the one million, back in two thousand eight, there was a mild tax increase. It was not big. It generated roughly about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the time. But we've, we've always estimated that we're going to throw at least five hundred thousand dollars specifically earmarked because of that. Increase towards roads. That would put us at one and a half million. So to go to two and a half million means we're grabbing a million dollars from our general fund every year. Just to go towards roads in excess of really the the dedicated funding stream that we have as a city. But if we go less than two and a half million, as Scott explained, we get further and further behind. We really need more than two and a half million in order to to really have a comprehensive overall plan. And it's not just the road portion as Scott talked about, it's all the utilities underneath and. And that's what the city council grappled with a year ago at our budget retreat. Saying, hey, let's come up with a plan that includes the infrastructure underneath. And so the plan that has been put together specifically identified roads that. If we do need to do infrastructure, that we have the dollars to to fix that. And there are roads in this plan that we need to repair a water line or or put together a storm drain system. Or, you know, do some other kind of improvement. And so this plan says, okay, if we do this many, this much towards roads, how much are we going to have to pull aside from? The water or the storm drain. And so Scott has that information as well because the plan that was put together. And again, thank you Rebecca. I I went through a lot of spreadsheets with her. It was very, very comprehensive. And detailed. It wasn't, it was, it was more than just a an engineering swag. You know, a number out of the air. It was, hey, let's look at linear footage. We know what curb and gutter costs. We know what a foot of of. Twelve-inch water line costs right now. And so we started to put together, it it was not. It was not a detailed bid from a contractor per se, but it wasn't, it was truly an engineer's estimate and a really good engineer at that. So thank you Rebecca.
Yeah, based on a lot of like actual bids and again, like you say, this plan that we see has a. Massive spreadsheet and an analysis behind it that. Rebecca and Aaron did a lot of work on.
I'm done.
So I, so I have a, I have a question. Question to be, do we kind of have a an even a rough chat? And I'm gonna ask Scott, David, Rebecca. Because we we make a plan, we kind of put it out there. But as as I know, building a house right now, because lumber prices are up, what did the contractor tell us last week, David?
They they've actually doubled since last March.
So we know, we know the economy is scaled and and the the economy is affecting the price and so we give a. We give a projection and then we kind of had to walk it back because. It is just the price of materials, the price of labor. I look back on my own business and I'm literally paying double the wage to have the same person work for me as I did about six years ago. If I didn't do that, I'd losing and I know it's across the board. Do, what effect has has the economy and just, you know, labor and materials had on? The overall, you know, outlook as we have said, okay, we have a ten-year plan. Well, we've kind of had to walk that back a little bit, can much like COVID, it's been kind of a moving target. Would you say that that this has increased thirty, forty percent on what we originally thought or do we, you know, do we have kind of an idea of what?
It's been a significant impact. That is not the only reason I rattled off a few other reasons why. As you said, Mayor had walked walked back some of the ten-year road plan that was first published. But it is a significant amount of it. When and when coupled with the other factors, a lot of that original road plan, it just, it's not going to get done at current funding levels. And one of the things, of course, that that original ten-year road plan assumed quite a bit more money. Would would be available than actually has been available. So it's not only while costs have gone up, but funding held steady instead of also going up. So that's one of several factors why it's why it's dramatically different. But I feel pretty confident in this plan now because again, we used. Real bids and then put in some inflation. Rebecca, please jump in and chime in if to anything you'd like to add to to that special.
So yes, Mayor, we definitely looked at the escalating prices and so we looked at. What we have for for the bids, not only, you know. Projects that we just did, but other areas and and we looked at, you know, some escalation factors on those. We tried to be reasonable, but we did add a contingency just to to address some of those costs because, you know, it's. Everything is going up, like you say, labor costs, material costs, it's. It's a crazy world out there. Whenever you get new bids and you just go, wow, this is, this is a whole different thing than it was even a few months ago and definitely. You know, significantly more than a couple of years ago.
One thing that might help us with that plan and maybe you've already put it in there, I don't know, but UDOT tracks an index on the cost of asphalt. And it's a great index to look at and to track what those have been historically. Now, obviously, any assumption is just a that, you're right, your educated guess, but. It'd be good to kind of maybe go off of that and see what that historical inflationary trend has been to build into it. Because my biggest worry with all of this is. We do all this planning, but we never move the needle in the direction. We keep saying roads are a priority, but even with this plan, we're saying. We're not going to improve the road condition overall within the city. And and to me, that's where maybe there was a disconnect. When I first got this, I appreciate the work that's gone into it, but maybe a little bit of a letdown. Because I thought we were planning to the need, not to the budget. So then we could come back and see what that. Funding needed to be with our first priority, which was property tax increases and where those needed to be at. And so I look at that and say, gosh, I would love to make sure we're actually planning to move the needle. Otherwise, it's not in my mind any better than the ten-year plan we had or any other plan because we're not really, we're we're kind of. Trying to do the best and make up job as we possibly can, but we know for a fact that our roads are going to deteriorate, right? To a worser condition every year and inflation only exasperates that decline. One question I had is, we also talked about this comprehensive infrastructure plan is what we called it. Are there other elements that will be forthcoming? Before the end of the fiscal year that show, well, here's the map of the water plan and the sidewalk plan and how they all mesh together over that five-year period? the map of the water plan and the sidewalk plan and how they all mesh together over that five year period?
Well, so to, I guess, to reiterate it again, Councilman, is all of the water lines, all of the water money that is budgeted towards waterline replacement, not repair, but replacement are for these roads. This consumes that and then some.
And and I think.
So the plan is pretty much you do the project, you're doing all all the necessary things at once. And there, there is no plan to do a water line without doing the road or to do a road without looking at the water line.
Okay. Well, I'd like to see what that number is. So is that the 100,000 you talked about each year?
That's correct. That's correct. Is the $100,000 that we had this year for for water?
It's actually a little more.
Is it? I thought we had it. Am I wrong?
Rebecca can jump in. I I know she's ready.
Needs to be more.
Yeah.
100,000 isn't going to cover it. And we should go to and assess the projects, you know. So this is, so what Scott's got is the 100,000 was what was budgeted this year. We asked, I think, for 500,000, didn't didn't get that. And so the idea is, you know, we do need to look at this comprehensively. And as we replace the these roads, if we replace the roads and don't replace the water lines, we're going to come back and replace the roads and the water lines. And so it is, it's not in our best interest to not take care of the water lines at the same time. But it's not going to be within that 100,000 that we're going to be able to do that. And we did assess the numbers with those that will be presenting in the in the budget, but they were not shown on that five year plan. That was just the road itself.
But what I'd love to see, just as one council member, is that next chapter to the plan for for the water. And I brought this up in our last retreat and when we were looking at the budget. I believe our water fund is about coronary water fund is about 5 million. In fact, we're taking in more money on fees than we're actually spending. So to hear, hey, we need to increase that. It something's not connecting there, or maybe it's just the budget and the planning, but somehow we got to make sure we increase those water rates to be able to do those replacement projects. And I don't know if it's a lack of capacity or what is the you know, clog that's making it so we can't get that done. But that's what I would love to see. So maybe we're doing three water projects in anticipation of the next year coming back and doing those those roads, right? Or whatever that might look like.
So council member, to to that point, we are, we will need to dip into those fund balances in order to complete these projects. So we, the plan is to use the the dollars that are allocated towards new pipelines and repair of pipelines. But we will have to use the fund balance in order to complete the roads and the water lines underneath those roads. So we will get you that report that shows all of the costs other than the streets, other than the roads. We'll, we will get you a spreadsheet that shows, you know, how much money in this five year plan is going towards water lines, how much is going to go towards storm sewer, et cetera.
Yeah. And then the sidewalk and the the.
Right.
Gutter. I I'd see that kind of just being four or five chapters of one plan that's saying, here's the streets, here's the water, here's the sewer. That was my anticipation of what we were trying to accomplish with this infrastructure plan. But maybe I'm I'm just one council member, so maybe I'm off on that expectation.
Well, no, it is your expectation. We just need to send you the final components of that plan. And it has been done. Like I said, sat down with Rebecca and her team and and Scott, and we went through specifically all of the utilities that would need to be repaired to in order to do this five year plan. Not only the roads, but water, sewer, streets, or I mean, water, sewer, storm drain, curb gutter, sidewalk.
Awesome. Great. David?
Yeah.
Just wondering, when might we see that? Do you anticipate? I'm not trying to pressure you. I'm just trying to wonder. And as related to that, whatever happened with the day for the retreat? I probably slept right through the email, but I haven't seen a set date for that retreat yet. So those two, to me, dovetail together because I think we're saying we're going to talk about it at the retreat. And we would have it by then and everything else. If I'm understanding what's going on.
Sure. So, you know, I think we can get that to you probably within a week. Because like I say, all this, all the work is done. All the engineering estimates are put together. We have that data. We just will compile it and get it to you. As far as the retreat dates, I sent something out and most everybody replied, it would be February 11th and February 12th.
I I saw the email and and saw a couple of replies. Oh. Am I muted?
No, you're there. Oh, you are now.
Now, there we go. I I saw the request for the dates and the approval, but I only saw a couple of responses and I never did see a finalization of it, is I guess what I'm saying.
Okay. Yeah, the 11th and the 12th of February.
Worried, Kevin, because the 12th is the lunar new year, and there was some concern about that.
The Chinese New Year, yes.
Yeah. Well, the lunar new year. So.
Yeah.
But does that happen on Thursday night or Friday night?
It's Friday, Kevin. That's that's Friday. And I know you're just asking me because you knew that. But yeah.
No, I did. But we'll be through by middle afternoon on Friday, so we can still get to the party, right?
It depends. It depends. It's.
Thank you.
It's the year of curb and gutter. I know I do have a question as far as economies of scale. I like the idea of spreading out the love or the hate, whichever way you're looking at it, or the inconvenience. But is it more expensive to do like a couple of blocks of curbing, curb and gutter here? And then come back next year and do a couple of blocks? Or would it be better to do like four or five blocks all at once?
So.
More economical?
Council, Councilor, it's the curb and gutter, I should say, the sidewalk. Let me, let me hit the sidewalk because I know we've discussed sidewalks.
Yeah, I'm I'm talking about the whole thing, but you know, just using.
So so generally, when we do the when you're doing a road, it's better to do the curb and gutter at the same time. If 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 we're doing the curb and gutter, a lot of times the curb and gutter, sometimes in some cases is in decent shape and you don't do every stone, you just hit the parts that need to be replaced. If you're doing significant amount of work, it's always better to do the curb and gutter at the same time. The sidewalks, a lot of it doesn't really matter quite as much because a lot of that work we're doing in-house.
Okay, I'm going to just interrupt you, Scott. I think she was saying, isn't it better to do a longer road than to do a block at a time?
I'm sorry, misunderstood.
I was looking at the whole picture, just using that as an example.
Okay. Um, there is most, sorry, I answered the wrong question there. There is, there is definitely an economy of scale. Where tends to be larger projects will attract more bidders. There's benefit to to doing that. No question about it.
And you you save the mobilization costs every time. I mean, some of those mobilization costs have been huge.
So typically mobilization costs are a percentage of your overall project. However, there is economy of scale in mobilization costs as well.
I'm just saying that might be one more.
Yeah, you don't necessarily save it all, but.
No, I wouldn't expect all of it.
Some, yeah.
Might save half of the second one or something.
Yeah, you're right. You're right, council members. It's there, there is a savings there if we could do long stretches of roadway all at once. That's that would be ideal.
Longer than two or three blocks. If we're going to come back the next year and do two or three more blocks.
At least, yeah.
Why not just do them together?
Part of that is the access. So sometimes when you do too many blocks in a row, now you've got the entire neighborhood's roads shut down. All their driveways are shut down. I and I know especially when we do payment management projects, it's it's very difficult to do, you know, huge swaths and and long roads and lots of parts of the neighborhood because you've got to close it down and let that that treatment cure. And during that time period, it is shut down 100%. And you don't want to have a whole neighborhood shut down where they can't park, you know, fairly close to their houses. Sometimes that happens with our our big road projects too, where we have to actually close the road, get the water line installed, repave the road. So the it's it's a balance is all I'm saying is it's there's pros and cons, definitely.
So another question I had there is what is our current RSL? Where are we at now?
Scott, have you looked at that recently?
I I have not.
The 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 most recent that I looked at it was probably a couple of years ago. And I want to say it was like an eight or a nine.
Yeah.
It was not above a 10.
I did a good estimate and it's it's ish in the eight range. One of the things that's actually helping us is a lot of the roads, especially in like the TOD area. Some of those are new roads.
Yeah.
So it makes it look better. It's not really better. But it makes it look better.
I think they call that new math over at the elementary school.
Yeah. They dilute it.
The the problem is that's going to be like a spring where you're compacting it. And so when we hit build out, all of a sudden you have this huge decline because you don't have those new roads coming on anymore. And so it's going to have this spring effect that will drastically affect that RSL rate. So what I'm I'm thinking about here is when we had the road bond, we talked about Utah State University students coming in, looking at every road every year. They gave a report on an RSL. We tracked that on a regular basis. Is that something that's still happening?
No.
Is the absurdity.
No, we we have not had Utah State come in and do that. So I I believe the last time Utah State did that was before I came to the city. So it was at least five or six years ago.
Or Rebecca was for. So I think that's crucial to have at least every couple of years. Otherwise, how do you know where you're at as you're adapting your planning and talking about it needing to be flexible? I would use that as our grade on how we're doing on roads. That's how you know if you're moving your needle or not, right? And I think part of this plan that we need to put in place is what is our RSL goal? We talk about needing, you know, in different documents. I know the mayor in the paper just a few days ago was was quoted as saying, hey, to get our adequate service level or to meet our needs, we need to spend four to five million a year. But what does that give us as an RSL? Like that, that's what I think we need to set is was it, what is our acceptable level of service as a city? And then we know what we're building to or what we need to maintain going forward. And I think that's a discussion we have to have. And then we build the road plan to meet that desired goal. It's very easy to grade it. If we grade it on the way that money is spent, my worry is you can spend money a lot of different ways and it may never actually move the needle. And so and I kind of feel that way the last nine years. You know, we put out on these sheets, here's how much money we've spent. We're increasing it every year, but we never really know if we're actually improving our road surface condition or not unless we're getting that feedback from these studies. So just some feedback from me is I think we need to define what the RSL is, build the plan to the RSL and then have a maybe it's every couple of years, depending on what pricing is or something like that. And I'd love to put a little gauge up there, little odometer. You know, we're in red right now. Hey, a couple of years, we hit yellow. Very easy for the public to understand and feel that that progress is being made and it's very easy to track. Just some thoughts.
So if you remember right, when we talked about the 10 year road plan, I'm trying to pull up that document on my, on my, in my files, but I believe the council at that time looked at it at least a 12, an RSL of 12 was where we were trying to shoot for. And that 10 year road plan actually showed an increase in the amount of dollars the city would have to start allocating towards roads. Within a three year timeframe, it would escalate to four and then to $5 million a year.
Right.
And 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 that.
Be honest with you because we did talk about that. We put that in the plan, but and this is going to be the hard decision we as council members are going to have to make this year. How long do we continue to do what we've been critical of other councils and not increase the funding? There's only one way to do it in my mind that I know of that we have control over, and that's do property tax increase. And sorry, David, I think if we made made a 12 and we said, hey, now let's do it, then we've got to be committed as a council to our first priority, which was to get back to how do we get the adequate funding?
Yeah.
Especially as our B and C road funds will probably continue to decrease with electric vehicles. Unless there was a way to calculate that.
I I anticipate our Class B and C road fund decreasing as well. A lot of communities, it, you know, it's based on lane mile, right? And so our lane miles in in relation to all the other lane miles in the state is actually decreasing, even though we're growing. There are cities who are growing faster than us. So Saratoga, Eagle Mountain, Lehigh, their Class B and C, I mean, they're getting a lot more money every year because as a percentage of total lane miles, they're expanding rapidly. And so communities like Cedar Hills, their Class B and C is decreasing every single year. And then Barbara, you bring up a great point with electric vehicles. The, you know, there's less gasoline consumed, although our population's growing. And so there are more cars on the road. You know, but but there's a balance there. You bring up a great point.
I I wonder what other council members' thoughts are because I think that's so critical to this plan, to actually have something we're grading ourselves on more than just spending of dollars. Is that something that we want to see? Part of the plan is to put an RSL service level in there and how we're going to get there over a period of time?
You know, I'm 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 a council member. I I think it's a good, I think measuring yourself and where you're at is a good thing. But I think if we've learned anything over the last eight years, even since the road bond failed, is that there's oh, there's just a lot of changing mechanisms to it. Now, we can fix an amount of money. You know, we can raise property taxes. But where is that going to get us? I think that there's, it's good to have a goal, but I just, I feel like what you're you're describing, there's some rigidness to it, maybe a little too rigid. And so I think that there there's some way of maybe having some flexibility, knowing that the conditions might change. For all we know, you know, if maybe the economy will maybe take a little dip as we, as we learn in 08, boy, that was the time to get contractors on board. So I I like the idea of measuring, but I don't like the hard, fast measurement. We have to hit this right now or we're going to have to make some kind of a an increase in revenue or decrease in services or something to that effect.
I I would. Come across that way of decreasing.
It it did. Yeah, it was very, it felt very rigid. And we got to have a goal and and it just, to me, there's needs to be some real flex in there with the idea that we're going to do everything we can. We're going to push, put money into roads. We know it's the top priority. But then again, COVID hits and that's should be once every hundred years, but then we had a recession in 08. And I wouldn't get out there too far. I just feel like we do what we can with a good goal in mind, but to set it hard and fast, there's just a lot of changing elements to it.
Well, I think we can set a goal and that goal can always change with those elements, right? We all have that in our business. We should. And and those goals change based upon economic conditions and things of that nature. So.
But yeah, and I and I think, yes, they do, they do change. I set goals, you set goals, but as we, as we're looking to set goals and measurements, it's costing real money just to come up with the data and it's costing time and manpower. And they're already stretched thin as it is. And so that would be the difference. I, for for a business goal, it's a little different than in investing resources into them. And I'm not saying goals aren't good. They are good. But it's felt a little, it feels a little rigid.
So I'll I'll find that 10 year road plan, Mayor and Council, and and we can at least review that. I think it would be helpful to review that and kind of see what what it what it was. Of course, as Scott mentioned, it's it's inaccurate at this point with escalating costs, soft costs that were not included, different, different components. But but we we do need to move the needle. And and we do need to be flexible as we do that because I, we we know money doesn't grow on trees. And that's a hard decision for a council to make to adjust taxes or or fees. One, one thing that that's kind of been interesting is watching Pleasant Grove City. You know, of course, they were challenged on their road fee. They did lose the initial challenge. They are appealing. They're not sure they're, they will prevail on that. That I think I, when I talked to Scott Derrington last in Pleasant Grove, he said it's probably going to take another year before they have a resolution on that. In the meantime, the state legislature supposedly was going to kind of pick that up and define it. I don't know if that's on anything with the legislature this year. There's been so many other things. There's been so many other things that have kind of hit the legislature. Uh, so I don't know if this is one of their priorities to, to define. So, um, but my, my recollection is that that number was about an RSL of 12, if I remember right. And, and that's not a bad RSL. If, if we could maintain at least a 12, you know, 20 is a brand new road. Um, and it doesn't take very many years for, for roads to start dipping down to that, you know, 15 number. So 12, 12 would be a lofty goal, quite honestly, for the city.
Well, I think the reason we picked 12 and you could tell me if I'm wrong, that's when you see a 40% drop in quality of, of the road from what the engineer reports were saying. And so that was where it was cheapest to maintain it was at that eight year cycle. I think it was if you could get to road maintenance within the first 10 years, um, you, you saved yourself that 40% drop that happens in the next, uh, eight years. Uh, that's there, or I'm sorry, the next five years. So anyway, just whatever it is, I would like to measure where we're at. Cause I really feel like we haven't done a great job with that in the past.
I, I think, I think there's merit to everything that's been said, and I'm not trying to be Switzerland on this. But the part that I struggle with is I look to cities all around us and I look to, um, you know, different council members and we talk about that. And I can't see anyone who I feel like is doing any better than we are. Um, and, and all of the cities seem to be able to struggle. We talk about a property tax increase because we haven't had one in a number of years and, and being able to go through that process. And I, I, I think we definitely need to know where we're at. Um, and I'm certainly not saying that, please don't misunderstand. I'm not saying because everyone seems to be in the same boat that we should sit pat. But there, there is some, there is some serious thought that needs to go into what we might do different more than, you know, purely raising taxes or whatever that might be. And is there something, is there real merit in the fact that we have a plan regardless of rigid or not rigid? Clearly we have to have a plan similar to what we've seen right now. But again, it seems like, okay, from the water line replacement and increasing the hundred thousand dollar investment so that we can do that better to this. You know, I, I wish I had, I, I wish I could see far down, you know, the end of farther down than the end of my nose to figure out how this might come together, where at, where it can be effective rather than just be another spend of time, planning and, and then hoping it goes through. Because it seems like in the city, the best laid plans don't end up, you know, coming to fruition entirely the way we, we would want them to. So I don't know, it really, um, has anyone had an experience with any of our, our sister cities that feel like they're on top of it? And they're doing a good job that are in any kind of, you know, Spanish Forks, the Lehighs, not even the Lehighs really. The Lehighs population is so different, but, but Pleasant Grove and it just, orum, it just doesn't feel like anyone has a great handle on this that we could model ourselves after. Is that true or, or false?
I think Highland maybe did speak to that, you know, they've been a big road impact fee or not impact fee or maintenance fee. I don't know if they've stopped that since the Pleasant Grove thing went through, or if they're continuing to charge that and put it in there. Provo did the same thing, right? Uh, Pleasant Grove, I think the key there is, is everyone identifies the issue. And the root of the issue is money because it costs money to fix these roads. And there hasn't been a good dedicated source of revenue. So I think other cities are grappling with how to come up with that revenue. Um, I think some have come back as I've talked to others and they take the Jeff Shorter approach to drive on gravel eventually. And that's okay. That's their remaining service life and that's their goal, right? That's all right. Um, I think as we take a look at all these other cities, Pleasant Grove, Highland that did these studies, all the same studies say the same thing. You're going to save yourself 40% if you do treatment in the first 10 years. And I think that's where, when I've talked to these other cities, that's where they're trying to get the funding to get to. But that's just been my understanding as I've talked with others out there.
So yes, um, uh, Highland City has $18.50 per month fee on their utility bill to roads dedicated to roads. Um, so that's $222 a year in, in extra taxes, uh, that Highland City residents pay. Um, Pleasant Groves is, is roughly $10. They are, um, in, so hi, let me back up to Highland. Highland is still collecting those dollars. They haven't been challenged legally yet. Um, and I, I, I don't know why, I don't know why the same group that challenged Pleasant Grove didn't challenge the other 12 cities that have road utility fees like Provo. Um, so there are.
Pleasant, because it's Pleasant Grove and they've got that group of people over there.
Could, could be, could be.
David, before you go down this road, i- is Highland, is Pleasant Grove, is Provo, are they in any better shape road wise? That's my point. It doesn't feel like they are.
No, they're not.
Like it is to me. They're.
And that, that's.
They're in Highland. Yeah.
Well, I think that what we'd have to do is again, um, versus us just taking and saying, I drive the road and it doesn't feel any different. Is it be good to go and ask them, and maybe this is part of our study. Since you've increased your spend, what's your RSL increased? Let's use science and math to, to see what that is and gauge if that's been a good use of funds.
Yeah, it might be a little premature to know if their RSL's moved yet. They can tell us what their plan is, their overall plan. But like Highland, I want to say their fees maybe two years old. And so they're just on the front end, at least they're starting to do road improvement projects throughout the city. It's been nice.
Are they using that money or are they just putting it in the kitty like PG is?
No, Highland's spending it. You bet.
Highland is spending it.
They're collecting and spending as fast as they can collect it because they don't want to lose it.
Yeah.
And they, they know if this, if this challenge gets sustained by the, by libertas towards Pleasant Grove, that they could lose their funding source as well. But if they spent the money. All those other cities that have a road fee, they're in jeopardy as well.
And, and so there we go. Do we want to, do we want to jump into that? I, I, I'm saying, you know, is this some, is this some bizarre kind of thinking that we haven't even entertained yet? I don't know. I, you, you know how I, I am, I am against going and getting another study. I think we could borrow the study from Pleasant Grove. It would be a little different with Highland. But we study ourselves into oblivion in cities and we hire consultants and we do all this stuff. And what we come out with is the same thing we had when we did it five, make five years earlier. And it's just a continual layout of money. If, if we had this, the money that we had put on Main Street studies over the last 20 years, we could pave probably bring RS, RSL up to a 16, but it, I really, I really fancy us a, a bit of a, a critical thinking team. I think it's very cohesive. But when I tell you I am baffled on where to go to get the dollars short of saying, kill the library, kill the rec center, the, the, these things, I just concentrate on roads short of just taxing the people crazy and ourselves crazy. I don't know where that's going to happen. That doesn't mean I'm giving up. But I'm just not in favor of going into another planning session that's going to yield the same thing that it's yielded two years earlier. And I, I don't know, I don't know where that critical thought is going to come from that actually lets us move the needle. Because I haven't seen anyone else move the needle. I have not seen a single city move the needle. I'm not saying give up folks. I'm just saying, man, I wish I had some kind of an idea that, that I could bring and say, say, you know, folks, let's jump on this train because this is going to make a difference.
Clark, just.
You know, I might ask Rebecca, Rebecca, you've been in the trenches with, uh, Provo City. They were the first in, we had, uh, John Curtis even come to one of our work sessions. And maybe you can provide maybe some historical background on that.
Yeah. So, um, I was not on the roadside, so I can't tell you what RSL was. I, I did water resources. I can tell you that, um, it was not necessarily a holistic plan. And so they were replacing roads, but not being able to replace the water and sewer lines underneath them that were 70 plus years old. Um, which leads to significant problems, um, with, with how that goes. Um, I definitely could, you know, reach back to some of my contacts over there and, and talk about RSL and see, you know, what they're, what they've seen, they have been doing it for a substantial amount of time now. Um, but it does, unless the plan is holistic, it, you know, you've got a road that's now a new road over a, a water line that's 60, 70 years old. And you're just going to have problems.
And that's, that's one of the things that I have applauded our city for doing and the way we've done that. Because to me, that makes, that makes total sense. That's the only thing that's giving me any relief when I talk to people who are cheesed about the roads. That's the only way I save this beautiful mug from being, uh, having someone strike me is because I said, look, this is, this is what we try and do. This is how we replace a road with the infrastructure and everything else beneath on the way up. So we're not just cutting into it and you can walk, when they're giving you grief, you can walk out into the road and say, okay, do you see what's happened here? Oh yeah, that was the PI. Or that was where my neighbor had to connect to the sewer or where there was a repair that needed. You know, my street is a, is a great example. My street's very small that way. Um, I love the way we as a city have done that and are, are planning to do that. To me, it seems like even though we don't have a, a huge influx of dollars and, and we don't have an RSL and, and we may be at 12, but we don't have an, an increasing RSL. It still feels like we're doing it right because I can, I got to think, and those of you who know me know my analogy that I wanted to bring up right now, but I can't. But, um, when we, when we can throw asphalt down and it can look fantastic and someone think, oh, fantastic, man. Look, the city has got a road done. And then 18 months later, we can be digging into that to repair a water line that should have been repaired. And it's like, boom, we start all over and now that road is, is garbage. The road that I love to reference is the one that I feel like we've been able to do good really well in my lifetime. And that is Seventh East, where we have, we laid Seventh East down, we did all the repairs that we needed to do. Then we've done the overlay since then to try and give that the ultimate life that we can in Seventh East. So it looks great after three years. Um, so I, I think there's a little bit of a grasp of reality and then there is, you know, I, I really want to move the needle. I just, I, I've got to tell you, I'm not complacent, but I, I'm not going to hang my head if I can't find a solution to this that bumps us up higher in the RSL in the near future, because I think we're doing it right. And it, it, it's same thing. Do you want your taxes to go up? And if you do, I mean, that's going to help our roads for so long. I don't know. This is a, this is a strange thing and I'm going to stop talking now because it's part kick the can. It's part, uh, be grateful for the philosophy that we're taking on the infrastructure repair, et cetera. And at the same time, it feels like futility.
So the curiosity, Clark, I want to better understand some of your comments on the, uh, the studies. Was that in relation to doing, uh, finding out what our current RSL is and kind of doing that on a repetitive basis?
Yeah, except what, Rob, what will that get us? If we still don't have the resources to make the changes to the roads, what will the study of our RSL get us?
I think one, it tells us where we're at now, so we can do that analysis and compare ourselves to other cities and where their RSL is at and how they're spending their money. But then it also gives you a trend line where you can be able to say, gosh, the last 10 years, we went down two RSL levels. Right? Um, and, and we can set whatever the expectation is, how fast we want that decline, how fast we want the incline, whatever that would be, but at least you know where you're at. Um.
But if you don't have a mechanism to do anything about it, then, and we're, we're absolutely managing the dollars we have to the very best ability we have, what difference does it make?
So I think the key there being from what I remember Mayor Hadfield saying is that Utah State University students came down and did it for free. It was no extra.
That's the case. Boom. If it's free, it is for me. Rob, I'm with you.
That's, that's where I'm at is I don't think it has to be, I don't know if you have to have these scientists that go out there and measure. I think there's criteria they use and they use their engineering department from what I understood. Maybe they don't do that anymore. Maybe we partner up with another engineering school that's more local that would be willing to do that.
U V has three new engineering programs. They started last year, I think.
Yeah.
BU, Barbara, did you say UVU or U of U?
U V U.
I think that'd be great. I, I'm all over that. Those free studies I think are fantastic.
I don't know if they do free studies, but they've got new programs.
You have those young impressionable minds that are trying to make a difference and, uh, come out and teach all of us. I'm all over that, Rob. No, honestly, i- if they're willing to come out and do that, I'm, I think that's great for us without spending additional dollars.
I think you just got to be careful when you're assessing RSL, there is some subjectivity. And a student might not have the same subjectivity as somebody who's done it for longer.
I think the key there is it's just the, the same group coming out and they use the same subjectivity every time they come out, right? Any study that's done is going to use some kind of subjectivity associated with it. So, um, that's where my thought comes into play is at least it's better than now, not knowing where we're at.
Again, i- if, if we don't have a mechanism to move the needle, I mean, I think we have a pretty good idea where we're at, but I'm not against planning. I'm not against any of that. I'm just, I'm against futility and that's what it feels like to me at times.
Okay. I have been waiting to ask a really stupid question that will make me look really stupid, but I feel like I would like to know the answer anyway. Um, as I'm looking at how we, the assumptions that we made for this plan, of course, we have a set number that we're, we're planning to the budget. And I, I know how property tax works. I know how the certified tax rate works, but there is money that is given to us as an increase in property tax through our growth. And we're not putting any extra dollars toward this budgeting even in accounting to growth. So I'm wondering if there is any, if there's any leeway there in relation to the growth dollars that come in.
David, I think you best answered that.
Yeah, there, there is some leeway there, obviously, because a certain comp, I mean, if we're taking more um, of our general fund budget to put towards roads than we're collecting, then there is a certain piece of our general fund that, uh, as it grows, we can also allocate that towards roads as well in the same, in the same proportion. That's assuming every other department has the same percentage of the total revenue stream. Now, let's say the library or police or fire or the fitness center, their, their portion of that general fund also expands. It's got to come from somewhere, right? And so does that come from roads? Does it come from another department? That's, that's a question for city council, but we can.
I understand that, but we, you have a set dollar amount, not just like a, a proportion amount. You have a dollar amount, right? Do I understand that right?
For the roads?
Yeah.
So right now we do because that, that growth hasn't been that substantial, but it can adjust, i- it can move forward, it can increase. Um, so yeah, that number can, can increase. But again, it still isn't, that number isn't going to get us there either. As, you know, to Clark's point.
I think that is that the other departments are growing in a faster rate. You know, we had to add a few police officers this year. Uh, we're talking about, I, I, how many more firefighters are we supposed to hire by the end of the year, David?
So we had in the budget, three new, um, EMT firefighters plus the battalion chief for, for this fiscal year. So, yeah.
So you look at that, that's, uh, gosh, what, what did I hear the cost of a, of a police officer was? About a hundred thousand? Is that about right?
Yeah. If you add in all the equipment and the vehicle and everything that they need, yeah, it, it, uh, starts to push that.
Concern I've had in the past, Stacy, it's hard to track that because it all hits the same pop. And then every year it just gets jumbled. The nice thing with the water funds and the other utility funds is they're carved out and they're separate. You can track that. And I think we need to do that same thing here with the roads. So we can say, hey, fire and police need to hire people. We can come back and say, great, there's no money in the general fund. That means we're going to have to take it from roads and then we have that conscious decision to make. But in the past, we've always said whatever is left over is extra, is supposed to go back into the road fund, right? We passed that a- as part of our budget, if I remember right. Problem is, is there's not enough extra because it gets eaten up and all the other stuff.
Well, and then in addition to that, council also, um, Well, and then in addition to that, council also, um, had a goal to increase our reserve fund. It's, it's gotten too low. Um, state allows us to go up to twenty-five percent. And we were under ten percent for, for a time. Um, I don't know the exact number today based on our last budget closing out. I'll work with, with Anna, but, uh, but yeah, so there's, to your point, Councilmember Shelton, there's a lot of, a lot of demands. On, on that money. And so to say whatever is extra goes towards roads. There won't, there won't necessarily be a lot, a lot extra when we're growing so rapidly. And that's what's tough about being, you know, in a city that's growing fast, is our, our needs are growing fast. You know, we do need those, those other firefighters. I, I, you know, when the chief comes and presents his plan. And, and the council considers that and, and we consider that, it is a need, it really is that. Uh, but, but to your point, then we use those dollars there at the fire department or the police department or the fitness center or the library or wherever. Uh, a- and then there's not a lot left over for road.
I think what we're feeling is the classic squeeze and it's gonna get tighter and tighter and tighter every year because we're not keeping up with inflation. So we're trying to keep up with, you know, every year we give three percent raises to employees. Where does that come from? Well, we're hoping it sells tax increases, but at some point, that's not gonna keep up with the monster that's growing that is the needs of the city, city. And we're gonna feel that squeeze ever so tight. And, you know, we were predicting a recession this year just because of COVID, which was being, you know, very conservative. That that was great budgeting, but it got us all worried. And we average a recession every seven years. When that recession happens on our sales tax, we're gonna really feel the squeeze really, really hard, so. I think we got some tough decisions to have to make here in the next few months.
So that'll be a lot of the discussion that we have at, at the retreat as well as, as why we're being squeezed, what this growth is doing to our. Organization, you know, where, where are we headed? Uh, you know, we, we, we need to supply, we need to give the service to our residents. How do we best do that? Do the service levels, if, if we maintain them at the same level, what do we need? If, are they gonna drop? Are the service levels actually gonna go down? Um, and that's gonna be a big part of our, our budget retreat discussion that we're gonna have on the eleventh and twelfth. So, so, um, back just to close out then, Mayor, if it's okay, if I just say a couple things. Scott and Rebecca, I'll get with you, make sure that we compile all the information that we have to come up with the other utilities. That are going to cost us the dollars to complete this five-year infrastructure plan. Let's get that prepped and. And over to city council so they can see those numbers. Um, and let's, let's start there. I look, I, I looked back through an old email that I have back in twenty seventeen. Um, the RSL was a thirteen is where we were shooting for. In the ten-year plan, the RSL would, would be thirteen. Um, based on the old plan, but again, by year three and four, we were increasing, uh, between four and five million dollars a year. Allocated towards the roads. So that gives you an idea.
And then, uh, could you as well, I mean, let's see with, uh, what Utah State's doing. Let's see if U V U has an up and coming program and if. If somebody's willing to come out and do it for free and give us at least some kind of analysis, I think that's has. We have nothing to lose by doing that.
I remember looking at the TAP program through Utah State and it, it's been modified over the years. Um, I'm not sure they still have the same program that they had, you know, ten years ago. I know in Cedar Hills, I had, I had the TAP group come to Cedar Hills and, and do an evaluation. We, we got what we paid for. Uh, it was a great value for what we paid. Um, and so Cedar Hills, we moved towards doing an in-house. Um, because we got a more comprehensive plan, so.
Well, I could probably help out on that. I did do thirty-two miles with Santa in the back. I kept, I kept saying I should take notes. I, I knew where every, well, at least in those thirty-two miles. So that's basically what it is, a little more comprehensive than Santa, but it is just, you know, going through the city and making notes and. And making criteria, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually Santa could probably tell us. He was really the one in the bucket, so.
I was gonna say, don't discount Santa in front of me, Brad, please. Um, don't.
Okay. All right, is there any other things before we move on? I, I do think this will be, again, it has been and will be. A major topic, uh, on February eleventh and twelfth. It, it will forever be, I think, until we can really feel good about it. Um, so. All right, let's move on to item number three, uh, discussion on council rules and procedures. Uh, so what you have before you and what, uh, was sent in the packet, I just wanted to maybe give you a little insight as to. Why this is here, um. You know, I, I feel like the, the seed of this was kinda spawned when we had, and I noticed some very, very bad behavior. Of a council member up north. They kind of even infiltrated our own council chambers. And I saw how they tried to manage this individual in a, in a do-it-so with decorum. And, and I know that they had rules in place and so. Really from there, from then to now, it's been something that David and I have had kind of on our plates. We've, we've revisited and we've come back to it. But it got a little more comprehensive and so we just felt like it's there to. Prepare and clean up what was in two thousand nine, two thousand nine was an abbreviated. Portion of the Roberts Rules of Order. And it was just, it was just, this is more comprehensive. I consider it. A living document. Um, and so it has the ability to be modified as we learn together. There is an element of check and balance in there as far as, you know, um, executive to legislative. And I think that's a healthy thing to have. Um, in doing so, I just, you know, we've tried to strike a right, a real good medium in this. And just so that everybody understands the role, the mayor, the council, the staff. And, uh, I'm open, I, I, I don't wanna really go through it, it's, uh, what is it, thirty? Eighteen page, fifteen pages total. But I think that the council's had half the time to look at it. And so what I would propose is that we just kinda zero down into what. Any individual concerns that you might have, and then this will be brought to before us for a, a formal vote and, and to adopt this. So, um, does anybody wanna go first and?
Nobody's gonna get a concern as I just wanna make sure Stacy and Rob have read it and will comply after that.
Well, I do have a list of issues. No, mine aren't so much issues as points of discussion maybe that I, I'd like to bring up. Um, and this first one, honestly, it's two point four, it's more, just tell me what you mean because. It says recog- recognition by the presiding officer. And the way it describes it is before addressing the coun- city council on any issue, the presiding officer has to. Recognize the person who wants to speak. And maybe I've been doing this wrong, but I sort of, I thought we were. A little more conversational and I didn't re- realize that we were needing to be, have a formal recognition by the presiding officer. So I wanted to bring that up as, tell me what you guys think, what, what, how are we supposed to be working that way?
I, I stumbled with that same thing and I, I, I think, I just looked at it as. When we are discussing things and we're doing it civilly, that seems to be fine, but it. And it, it, fortunately, it hasn't got out of control. Um, so, you know, I, I thought, I left that to the deference of the mayor. If we're able to conversationally have those discussions like when we've been able to do, then it seems like that would be fine. But if it got into like shouting match and people trying to talk over one another, um, and, and it got, you know, out of line, then I, I would think. This is where that would really have to come, come in. And I think maybe it's, um. Instead of recognition by the presiding officer and, and words like must. Um, I don't know if shall be recognized or, or may be recognized by the presiding officer unless. I don't know, but I, I guess that would be to the deference of the mayor on this one.
So I, I had a thought on this as well and, and, um. In order to maintain the right decorum in these meetings. I, I think it is appropriate for the presiding officer to recognize people as they speak. However, the presiding also, also has the ability to say, okay, council, let's have a discussion, let, let, give me your thoughts. And, and when, when the, when the presiding officer says that, then you get to the council, I feel like can go ahead and discuss things. Freely with each other and, and together, not necessarily being recognized individually. But if there becomes a point where a person either dominates or speaks over someone else, then the presiding officer can say, hey. I, let me, let me recognize you in order of, of, um, the discussion. Tell, tell me you wanna speak. Um, I think it's appropriate that the presiding officer has the ability to control the meeting and, and make it run smoothly. Um, but he, the presiding officer at any time can say, okay, this is open for discussion. Let me hear your thoughts and comments. And at that point. It's not so much, okay, council member Carol, you're next and council member Taylor, you're, you're, you follow her.
Although at Zoom, you do kinda have to keep order a little bit, say. But I, I think back to, uh, Mayor Hadfield, if, if you were there. You remember the walkie-talkie incident where he taught a powerful principle? But, um, yeah. But it, 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 you know what, I think some of this is kinda leaning into, to some real what-ifs. But generally speaking, exactly like David says, what, what are your thoughts? What are your concerns? Have any questions? At that point, it's open to the floor. Um, and I, and it might be that a citizen might think that he needs to get it so that. Again, it just kinda brings it into order into whoever's presiding at their conducting that meeting. Um, at the time, whether mayor, mayor pro tem, it might even be one of your own. If it's something that you find problematic in a committee, I could see that being something you might wanna implement as well.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
To hear about the walkie-talkie.
I know, I, I don't know.
Oh, well, we had one council member that wouldn't, just, just wouldn't be quiet, just kept talking and talking. And so he used his military background. And described the use of a walkie-talkie. And he says, only one person can speak at a time and they had to hold the button down. And he says. Right now I'm holding the bu- button. So it was almost as just to say, be quiet and listen. So he used the, the, the idea of the walkie-talkie. But again, we had a council member that just would not, he just kept going and going and going and, and mayor couldn't, couldn't reel him in.
I've changed my ways, by the way, so I don't, that, that's not a problem going forward.
That's because we got a mute button on Zoom now, you just have to hit.
So true.
Okay, I'm just gonna go down my list of, of discussion points really fast. The five point seven is roll call vote. And this is something I've thought about multiple times, how if. I don't, I know that's how a lot of cities do it, but it seems like it might be a better practice to have us. All vote at the same time and then show our vote or something. I don't know if there's any sort of, I just. The order of the vote sometimes makes a difference. It's not a big deal, just something I have thought multiple times.
You're, you're saying, you're saying like that all in favor say aye, it's kinda like, this is how I feel, I, I can't strategize what's before me and somehow move.
It, it seems like it's always on Barbara.
Yeah.
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 Mix it up or, I, I feel the same way. I think that's a great point, Stacy. I, I, I. I, I like the, I mean, there's no mystery how we voted.
No, no.
Went to a roll call vote because some state items require a roll call vote. And so we just do that across the board. But what I've seen other city councils do is they'll just say, hey, here's the order for the first item, here's the order for the second item, here's the order for the third item. So it just kinda jumbles up and everyone takes a turn. So you might get three first votes in a meeting and two second votes and, you know, whatever that may be. And maybe that's a better way of trying to switch it up, so it's not always, uh, an advantage for one council member to either go first or last or in the middle.
But they're still posturing when there's a vote that way, it, when, when there's a roll call vote, I feel like.
Sherilyn, can you offer anything on a legal way? Because I do remember this being changed up specifically at the time. And we've just kinda stayed with the practice. Maybe it was for transparency, but again. Everybody's gonna know at the end of the day, it's, you're either an A or an I. So.
Yeah, I, I, I think Councilmember Shelton kind of nailed it. There, there are some. Not all issues, but there are some issues and rather than try to figure out and make sure that we're not doing incorrectly on some and not others. Um, i- it's easier just to do the roll call vote for all matters, so you don't mess that up. Um, I, I don't see anything wrong with switching up the, the order, um, but. But I, I would recommend that you keep the roll call vote. I, I don't know, at one point, we, we were trying the, the technology route. And those votes were, I guess, somewhat secretive, um, until all votes were in. I don't know if there's something we can, right now would be difficult, but once we're back in, in city hall, that might be something to maybe explore a little bit more.
The, uh, the order in which the, the, the vote is called, I don't think is limited in this five point seven. So if the presiding officer wanted to start, you know, with, with Councilmember Shelton first and then go down the row or. Or Councilmember Chris Jansen first and go down there and then skip. Uh, they, they could do that. I don't think it, it says that we'll go in order of the way you're s- seated, uh, uh, up on the council stand, but. Um, so if you wanna mix that up, you could. Um, there are like, yeah, you've, you've, you've commented that there are certain things that require a roll call vote. But most, most action items can be, you know, all in favor, say aye. So, and, and, and if we wanna, if we wanna go to that, we can and identify on the agenda when it is required to be a roll call vote, we could identify that.
And, and I can explore that, I can explore that a little bit more and work with, uh, Terry to, to note that on the agendas.
Is that, does that also, for instance, when our other board meetings or other council assignments, um. Do we need to have that as well? Because I rarely have a, I rarely have a roll call vote.
You should be having roll call votes probably in some of your other, depending on, on what board it is.
I know on, uh, dispatch and, uh, North Point we do, but Beatification we don't. I think cause we're a recommending body, that's why we, we don't. But the final decision is the one that's the roll call, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah.
So Sherilyn for Fox Hollow, would I need to do that?
Um, for, I would imagine most of your action items on Fox Hollow would, yes.
Okay.
I can, I can speak with Ryan Wood a little bit more on that too, cause he, he can probably give some insight where he's sitting on the board. Um, or at least a, a member there surprised if there was something that needed to be done differently and it's not being done differently.
You know, expending funds, um, approving a budget, going into a closed session, um, those are all action items that. You would need a roll call vote. You know, they're, they're, you know, common consent style items, approving minutes, you could do it, uh, just, um, you wouldn't have to have a roll call vote for some of those. Okay.
I, I would, I would say though, the majority of the issues that you would have concern about doing a roll call vote are probably the issues. Um, that you don't want to do or that you're not able to do the roll call or, let me take a step back. The issues that you have to do a roll call vote on are probably the same issues that you're looking to avoid doing a roll call vote for. So it may not make much of a difference, uh, when all is said and done.
Can I make a quick comment? It's found in Title Ten, Chapter Three, five oh six, it says, a roll call vote shall be taken and recorded for all ordinances. Resolutions and any action which would recreate a liability against the municipality. And in any other case, at the request of any member of the governing body.
So they just say everything there with the liability.
Pretty much everything, yeah.
So all final action.
That's pretty much everything.
That does not include adjournment, so.
Don't know, that could be lit- litigated.
Yeah.
Matter of time, I guess, right?
I don't know though, but the underlying thing is, y- y- we, we fortunately haven't had that, at least I don't think we have, but. You, you can posture, I don't know, but it just doesn't seem right to me.
No, we've seen that posturing and it happened to me. Um, I was gonna vote no. And it was a matter of where there was only three, I'm sorry, two council or four council members. And I knew the mayor was gonna go my direction and I could have abstained and stopped his vote. Or I could have walked up and leave the meeting. Um, so there is some game in, I decided not to, but it did cross my mind, gosh, if I really felt this way. You could go, but, but didn't.
Yeah, I like it. I mean, it is what it is, though. It doesn't matter whether I like it.
Yeah, if there's any way to reduce that, that ability, that'd be good for me, too. Okay, my next, oh, sorry, go ahead.
You've got, we're gonna stay right with you, Stacy.
Okay. Um, my next one was a question on the motions. You list out, it's as item seven. You list out motions. I'm wondering if that, does that mean we are limiting ourselves to those are the only recognizable motions? Particularly, I thought that there was Robert's Rules of Orders, which I know we don't really use strictly, allowed to amend a motion and the way that it's written here, a motion to amend has to be amended only by permission of the original maker, which is a little bit unusual to me.
Actually, if you're going to amend the motion, it it the, it does need the approval of the original person.
That is definitely, yeah.
But maybe you're, maybe you're thinking of another, like submitting a substitute motion.
Oh, yeah.
Is that what you're, is that what you're referring to?
Probably, I probably I'm thinking of a substitute motion.
But but even with a substitute motion, you would want to let the first motion die. As a general rule, you you would you would not move forward the first motion before you provided a second motion.
And I was looking at the 2009 version. I just thought, you know, this is where we're at. And what is it changing to? So I asked Terry Lind today to send this to me. I actually really like this document a lot better than what we've tried to concise here. I was wondering if we couldn't take this document and insert it into this one. It talks about the motion process and the different types of motions, but I know it gets to be a little bit lengthy of a document, but I really thought that that was some good content in here in the 2009 version.
We, I know I looked at the 2009 version as well. We tried to keep it pretty simple and concise in this doc. That that is quite a lengthy document, but maybe there's pieces of that that we can just add into into this document. Pieces of the 2009. Is there anything specific, Councilmember Shelton, that you're you're looking at? You know, was there any specific piece of the 2009? Are you saying cartwatch the whole thing?
It's pretty redundant. There's a lot of similar things. I just like the wording better. I thought it was more clear on on the intent in the 2009 document. But, you know, it goes over agenda, quorum members, debate on motion, some of the similar stuff we had, but I just felt like it was a little more concise. The one thing I really liked was the motion section because it does go over, I mean, here, I think it has nine different motions you could make. Whereas on this one, it looked to be like it was only what, one, two, three, four, five different motions to make. Also liked the idea of how to be able to do a recess when some of the meetings go long or how to put a time limit. I liked how that worked better than the verbiage in this document that gives the power just to the chair to determine the time limit. It's it's actually the meeting of the body and the body determines what that time limit's going to be. And so I don't know, I could go into more detail about it. The last one I'll say is I love the motion process on the back of it. It gives a flow chart that we follow now, which I think is a really, really good guide. But sorry, probably didn't mean to steal it. Stacy just thought I'd jump in. That was something similar I had as well.
Okay. And I also, in that same vein, this, I didn't get that document ever that you're referring to. And I think new council members should be given or pointed to this document. And I had looked through, I think our city code, but this is probably part of our policies and procedures. So it's probably not in the code.
Well, that brings up two other points I wanted to make, too. I think that this should be on the city website. So anyone attending a meeting can know how the meeting's going to be handled and become prepared. And so it wouldn't be a surprise to them. I think that's helpful. I noticed on our city website, which has been greatly, I love the new look and feel to it. Under the Agenda Center on the right hand side, it has Engineering Services as a link. And maybe underneath Engineering Services, we put in, you know, rules for the council meeting. And I didn't know if this did need to be in code, if it was an ordinance that we were passing, or if this is just another resolution.
This would be adopted by resolution. It can be amended at any time by the city council. So, yeah, but but putting it on the city website, I think is a is a good idea. And we can definitely, definitely put this on there. So anyone that wants to look at it understands it.
And then we'd better make sure that we follow it. I mean, exactly.
So maybe we better not put it on the website.
Instead of saying so moved, make an actual motion.
I'm the king of so moved, though. It just feels right sometimes. Just so moved. I mean, we just, you know.
Sometimes, and I'll be, sometimes I'm, maybe I'm doing the motion. Do I have a motion to approve the common consent agenda? You know, there's the motion, so moved.
And when you say so moved, I mean, literally, that's that's right on. Unless you want to be from the Department of Redundancy Department. Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the common consent agenda.
Well, that's the thing. It feels very redundant when it's that. Yeah.
And there's one other thing I loved in this document. It's kind of to that same point. Is that if at any points a council member questions anything, they have the ability to ask for clarity on that. So by so moved, maybe someone has a question. They can, they can ask that question and get some clarity. Sorry, too much, Stacy.
No, you're good. Totally fine. Really, my last point of discussion was thirteen point three. I was trying to think of a some justification for council member compensation. And really, I think that like the mayor is a job, really. They spend a significant amount of time and generally for me, the more you pay, the more you're going to get good people. But I don't think that would be the case for the mayor, for the council. I do think that would have a justification for the mayor. Council members, I don't know if that's the case, especially because generally it's seen as a service more. I I say to people, no, I don't really get paid for this. I get a small compensation. That's just my two cents on that.
This is, in my opinion, still a, you're not really getting paid for all you do. And and so I'll just let you know, I I've actually reached out to the cities surrounding us and and got all of their compensation for their mayor and councils. And and I I took the 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 median of Lehigh, PG, Cedar Hills, Saratoga, Eagle Mountain, Linden. And I I took that median and and this right here represents roughly that median.
I was gonna say, this is a little bit of a pay increase, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's higher than it was previously. And so it it's been adjusted upwards. But again, looking at what the other cities are compensating their mayors and councils, I I I think it's appropriate to benchmark our city against the other cities, just like we do with our employee compensation. We benchmark against these other cities to determine where we are in our pay ranges. I think it's appropriate that we compensate the mayor and council equally as as other mayors and councils would be compensated. In fact, for American Fork, I I feel like you have more on your plate than many cities do. So many of you are putting in hours that other cities probably are not. And not not all, that's not across the board. But I think that you should be compensated equally with your peers and your counterparts in other communities.
And on that note there, David, I thought that I had, that I've liked, that I've seen done in other cities is every few years, they would have a citizens group get together, you know, the the mayor under his ad hoc appointment thing would put three people together. They did just what you said. And then they would bring it to the council and the council then would either vote to increase or decrease. But by doing it periodically, it wasn't any one person trying to line their own pocket. It was just part of a process and a procedure. And I've seen some cities where they continue to decline it and don't take the raise. But at least it helps everyone know where that benchmark is at and and it gives a discussion point. Because I don't think we've adopted anything officially since the 1990s on this. Is that right?
Yeah, it's been a long time.
I believe that the compensation that I am receiving is exactly the same as it was when I was first elected in 1996. The first time.
So I think it's just to your point, Stacy, where maybe, you know, are we attracting the right people by having that? I'm not saying every two years, maybe it's every four years or just whatever it ought to be. I think it ought to be written in here that it's reviewed by whatever process we want, whether it's staff or an independent citizens committee that's put together. They would make recommendations to the council and they get to vote on it.
Well, you, I I agree with that completely. I think it should be done on a more of a consistent basis. 1996 to 2021 is probably too long of a consistent basis. But it it should be done, you know, on a consistent basis. And then obviously the council, you you, this is all within your your control and your purview to decide. You can, you can make these compensation rates and anything that you feel is appropriate. But I I, when I, when I looked at these other communities, we were, we were low. And and this brings it more in line with what the other communities are.
So David, we're still below Pleasant Grove and Lehigh, though, right, with this?
Lehigh, Lehigh were below Lehigh just a little bit. They were 2,900 in Lehigh. PG was 2,007, 2,000 for the mayor, 700 for the council. And so, yeah. So.
Couple of comments. Saratoga Springs or Council's 1052.
Yeah.
There's, there's one difference between this and employees, though. If we don't think we're getting paid enough, we're not going to jump ship and move over to Pleasant Grove or Saratoga to get a different job.
Right.
The other thing is, we ought to at least clarify the fact compensation is paid biweekly according to the following compensation table. Base monthly compensation.
Hey, I was gonna make that speech.
Oh, go ahead. You do the miscellaneous.
That's okay.
And miscellaneous compensation, monthly compensation. Otherwise, it looks like we're getting that biweekly.
I thought that was the intent, Barbara. I'm just joking. I'm joking.
I first read it, I thought it was. I thought it was a huge increase. It needs to have monthly in there somewhere.
Yeah.
So I apologize. What is our current monthly compensation?
Uh, 1,200 for the mayor and 500 for council members.
Shows you how much I pay attention.
So it's a dollar twenty five an hour.
Maybe some week.
Maybe some weeks.
Well, that's the hard thing is some council members, I'm not talking about any on this current one, but others in the past, you could tell they would never come prepared or never fulfilled their assignments and.
Didn't read their material and all kinds of things. Thanks for asking that, Clark, because I had the same comment on there.
By the way, I like 25 page packets.
Second to the last paragraph on that page. Says, "Mayor and city council may participate in the city's group health insurance plan." Somewhere in there. I can't find it now. It doesn't, to me, it doesn't really state that we pay the same dollar amounts depending on our family status as employees, as regular full time employees do. It's in there kind of in a way somewhere. But I think it needs to be a little clearer that that's that it's in writing that whatever it is we pay. So there's no question.
I I think it's not explicit. It just is as provided in the city's benefit plan. So you would get the same plan. You would have to pay the same amounts as as the city plan requires. But we can make it more clear in that sense.
I think that's really what I'm saying. Should it be, I guess I'm asking the question really, does that, the way it's worded, does the city benefit plan cover that? Or does it need more verbiage? And I don't care either way. I think just the fact that a state's part of the city's group health insurance plan does pretty well tell it's it's the entire city. But I want to put in there, you know, as as compare, you know, similar to a, an employee or whatever. But that tells you you're part of the plan. And then another thing that we felt was fair is that, starting from this, if if you're comfortable with it, is that we in the same way that we offer to the employees, if you, if you, if you're not a part of that plan, it's 350 dollars a month in in excess of your council wages. Again, that's what we, if we have, if we have an employee that maybe has a spouse that has insurance and they just stopped out, we pay them 350 dollars.
They get 350, yeah.
Correct.
But I think that's fair.
By the way, I have met half of my number 14, compliance and compliance and enforcement is enforcement is spelled wrong.
Yes, it is.
And cement. I have.
Very good. I got one, too, for later.
Half of my maximum out of pocket cost already for this year.
On the high deductible, right?
No, I don't know where I'm on.
Whatever plan you're on, you've met half.
Halfway there.
The one with, yeah. I haven't met it yet because I haven't paid it. I just, I haven't even gotten the bill. I just got the statement. But, yeah, I'm on my way. Next week is surgery, so I should meet the other half.
All right. Kevin, did you have a spell, another spelling? You you mentioned you had one as well.
I do. Section 10, Code of Conduct. 10.1, City Council Code, and then the next line under that. Code of Conduct for members of the American Fork City Council Ensure Public Confidence. I think insure should have an S on it, but I'm not sure.
It should.
And then page 10. Let me look, one other one. I thought it was right there. It talks about page 10, number four. Okay. I think I've got my pages off. Go on to somebody. I'll try and find the right page. I had it written down, but now I can't.
Let me jump in here real quick. I had a few to run through. On page one, just location, saying that the mayor can change the location of the meeting. I just didn't know if that should be at the time of the agenda's published or what timeframe that would be. Again, I'm thinking to other city councils that have had issues, not necessarily ours, where maybe some gamut happened and at the last minute a meeting was changed or something of that nature. You know, where the the agenda changes can happen up to 24 hours in advance. Maybe that's what we add in there, except in case of emergency. But something of that nature. And then also putting in there, and I think this goes without saying, but it almost feels like it has to be said. Just because I've seen it happen and talked about in other situations where every council member would be informed in a, in a certain timeframe. That way, no one would feel, you know, left out or or how that was communicated.
I think that's fair.
And then your quorum 2.3, a minimum of three council members is necessary because minimum is your verb, are you renowned?
Are you renowned?
And then in 3.5 and 3.6, this has always just been a, an oxymoron in my mind. We always say we can't vote in work sessions or workshops, but then we say, let's go around the room and take the temperature. And that in and of itself is a vote. I think what we've always said is there's no final action taken on anything. And so sometimes I wonder if it's better clarity to have those motions to say, hey, this is what we want staff to say versus trying to read the tea leads and maybe be a little more clear and direct. Not a huge thing, but as we were talking about it, thought maybe that's something we ought to look at. So again, it's a motion of giving direction, not a final motion of action. Might give a little more clarity and help maybe speed the meetings along because when we're in a work session, kind of like we are in a council session, when we're in a certain agreement, someone can make a motion and then then go forward.
I I think that's what it's trying to say, like in 3.6 where it says, while broad general direction may be given, no final action may be taken in a workshop.
Right. But I know that sometimes they'll say. Right, but I know that sometimes they'll say, oh, I'll make a motion. And everyone's like, oh, you can't make a motion in this meeting. Uh, that, that was never disclosed anywhere. You can make a motion. And, and the idea of a motion is to come to a general consensus on something very specific, right? This is the decision that we're, a direction we're giving. And I think that would be helpful.
But not a binding consensus.
Right.
You know, I would have to say that if, if we can't come away from a work session with some consensus, then I'm not, I probably need to do a little bit better job, uh, going around the room and just kind of hearing from everybody. When I hear, when I hear if it's one person or, or whatever, then I, so maybe I need to be a better conductor of a meeting. I, I think going into any kind of a motion into a work session is problematic. When do you do, when don't you? If you have a developer in front of you. I mean, when I meet with developers, I even hate to shake my head sometimes. Yes, even when I'm individually with them in my office, because I, then I'll, I'll hear something two weeks later that may really like this. I just shook my head. And I think that in, in a work session, we have to be very careful when we, to make a motion at all, I think is problematic.
Well, I don't think there's, anyway.
Even, even the, even the language, um, if a council member says, you know, if I were to make a motion, it would be this. If you're a developer, you could misconstrue what that really meant.
Correct.
And I, and I, I think, you know, there is state law when it comes to work sessions and workshops. It's not advertised as a meeting where we can take motions or where we're going to take final action. Cheryl and might want to chime in on this one. But, um, I think we need to be real careful, um, as we approach discussions in work sessions and workshops where I, I actually don't mind the language where it says broad direction may be given. We'll take that direction. Um, a- anyone in the meeting would take the broad general direction and, 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 you know, to the mayor's point, if he needs to, you know, drill that down and say, okay, here's where your direction generally is. That's fine. But I think once we start saying, you know, if, if I were to make a motion right now, it would be this. I think we start to get ourselves in trouble.
But I think that the problem with making motions in work sessions, and I understand where Councilman, uh, Shelton is coming from. It's not a final action and that's really what's precluded. The problem is if you make a motion in a work session, have you not already made up your mind prior to, um, your, your city council meeting with your public hearings, especially if it's a public hearing item? It, it creates, it creates a legal hurdle that we would have to get over to say, no, 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 that wasn't the real motion. We, we conducted a final motion at a later date. And the intent is really to make sure that you're not taking any kind of final action. Um, the other issue that I would have from a legal end is you take a vote, even if you say this isn't a final action, um, you vote in favor of something. You learn a little bit of new information before your city council meeting and you reverse course. Um, now you create a reliance issue, e- especially in, in the world of development.
Well, I, I just not to spend too much time on this, just as playing devil's advocate with you. I think we're already doing that with the way we're handling it because you're taking an informal vote already. Um, and so people can construe that already and walk away from a meeting feeling one way. And so I, I don't know. I, I would love to see where that's at in city, state code. I tried researching it and couldn't find anything about work sessions, but that would be helpful for me. Um, item number four, um, just agendas. Um, in the past, um, I, I need definition of what's a super majority of the council.
So that would be, uh, four out of the five council members.
So my worry is in the past, to put something on the agenda, it's only been two council members having to sign a piece of paper and giving it to the mayor. So this would be changing that quite a bit, unhistorically. I'd suggest keeping it at, at the two member and, and kind of getting rid of the super majority item there. Obviously, if three members didn't want to discuss it, when it came up, they would make a motion to remove the item. But, um, it seemed to be that we're making the standard harder to get things onto the agenda, um, by going to a super majority.
And, and I would have to say that I looked this up and we researched it. And, and in the past, I've never seen anything that it even took two. It was maybe more, um, of a, something that, that was allowed or common knowledge. But I thought it was three. I thought we had to at least have three to put it on an agenda. And so, um.
I just remember Dick giving us that training on it, so I don't know if that was buried somewhere in, in his mind of where that was at. Maybe that was some prior packet that we had. But I felt like going to four was quite extensive. I, at least three sounds better to me because that's a majority of the council. But going from either two or three, whatever the current is, to four, for me was a little, little much.
I always remember it being two for as long as I, for as long as I've been around. It seems like it's been two. Again, seldom has that even ever been called into play, but.
Um, on, on, just on that, you know, the council has, you know, the council really has the authority. Um, because you are all voting members. And so any, any item that hits the agenda, the city council really has the, the authority to either approve or not approve. Part of where the mayor gets their, um, ability to, um, you know, to kind of lead the city is, is setting the agenda. And it, it doesn't have to be a super majority or a majority. It can be whatever you guys want. I looked it up. I tried to find where it said two or three. It's not in our city code. And we've never had a, a set of rules like this, that at least that I could find in the past. So it could have been two, council member Taylor, that you remember. It's just, it just never was defined.
Yeah, I don't remember. Yeah, I, I don't remember having read it.
Yeah.
I, I just remember, you know, it, yeah, it takes two to do that, so.
So on that, what's the, and again, um, we're not voting, but it, does two feel right or does three feel right or four or, or none?
And I think, and again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm thinking this will transcend any of us. This could be in, uh, part of the, you know, statute for ten years from now. What I was thinking was like unto it was how perhaps if you had a council, strong mayor, form of government, where the camp, where it was vetoed by the mayor and it took a super majority of the council to overturn, uh, to overturn a veto. And it just, it, it brought the, um, just some of the, the, the points of different offices that those two branches together a little bit, or it just brought definition. There's four, but I'm not married to it. We've never had the problem. Again, I'm, I'm thinking down the road for, for ten years. I, I can think of one time that it was even considered and, but so, not. Whatever you guys feel is fine. And I'm not thinking you're taking anything away from me. I'm just thinking of having a good check and balance in the different forms of government.
And I think what you're looking at, Mayor, that's more of a provo form of government, mayor council form. Where here, we're the six member, right? Like you mentioned before, you are part of the council.
Yes, but I, with, part of the council with no vote.
Well, except in case it's a tie, right? So there's, there's some counterbalances there and things of that nature. I kind of like the two because again, if three votes removes an item from an agenda, sure, they can put it on and then it gets taken right off, right? It wasted two minutes of time to be able to go through and get that taken care of. But I feel like it's a good balance that's out there. But, you know, we're coming at it from two different perspectives. Um, but.
All we're talking about is getting something on the agenda, really, correct?
Correct.
I personally think forty percent of the voting council members, which is two, is enough to have something at least put on an agenda. So I'm going to vote for two. Okay. Got it, Stacy.
Okay. Clark, there's, there's three right there. See, we're already doing this.
I refuse to set myself up for a council meeting later on, so I'm not going to say. No, I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right, next person.
Uh, the other one I had just was on, uh, four point two B. It just says, time is set aside for the public to express ideas and concerns and items not on the agenda. This in the past has been kind of interesting, not so much in the recent past, but, but more under, you know, Mayor Hadfield, sometimes someone would come in and, um, say they had a public comment and it was on an item for the agenda. And he'd say, well, we'll deal with that under the agenda side. And then the next time they would show up and it would be, no, you need to go in the two-minute public comment period. So I just wanted to be clear with this here, the intent is the two-minute public comment period is for non-agenda items and as the agenda items pop up is where we would allow public input?
I think in the past, we've allowed people to make comment in the public comment period on both. Either agenda items or non-agenda items.
I think it's appropriate to bring a developer up, make a comment during his, the, the, you know, his time as we, we were discussing that. So, so, yeah.
See later where it had, it just said that the public comment is just not on the agenda. So that's just where I thought, well, do we need to say then that public comment on the agenda items would be allowed on the agenda items? Or we just not even allow public comment on the agenda items?
Right.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm open to suggestions on what you would think was, is, uh, uh, in the past, we've, we've kind of let people come up, but I, so, um, again, this is something that we can craft together.
I like the idea of making it easy for the public. And if they have to leave, listen to their thing now, it's only two minutes. If, if they're willing to stay and participate and listen to the, uh, debate or, um, I can't think of the word, conversation about the item, then they could make their comment then. But I, I think we should be user-friendly.
Mayor, if I could just add a comment on that, it, the one thing to keep in mind is if you're going to be letting the developers, um, speak on the action item when it's called, you also have to allow opponents of that action item to speak at that time as well. So if you want to do public comment beginning, great. Um, but if, if you're, if you're going to open it up for your developer to speak to the item, you'll need to leave it open for opposition as well.
But you could ask questions during the agenda item, to, specific questions to the developer. So, um, that's not that they're making a public comment necessarily. They're just answering a question. Could you do that, Cheryl and? So, so maybe in public comments.
You could, but, but just thinking of recent, um, issues that we've had even. Um, there's, sometimes those questions become a little bit more than, um, the, the developer's not going to just answer the question. They're going to elaborate a little bit beyond that. And then the other side's going to want their two cents, um, to be added to it as well. And, and if you reject that, then you're not giving equal opportunity to both sides.
So would it be advisable, Cheryl and, in your opinion, to change this to where, um, you know, comments or concerns, ideas, they, for both agenda items and non-agenda items would be received during the public comment period?
I, I think it, it just either has to be one way or the other, right? Because sometimes there, there may be issues that you would actually prefer. Um, you, the, the standard has been, okay, when it's time to, to call the action item for a, a business license, for example. Um, or for, for a liquor license, you call the individual up and you kind of talk about the business, get some, some questions answered, some feedback. You wouldn't be doing that, um, i- if you put all of your, your comments at the beginning. Because then what if you have somebody that actually opposes that license? Not that our council has a ton of control over that, but, but if someone opposes it and wants to put it on the record that they're opposing it, um, if you make them do it at the start of the meeting, but then don't allow them to respond to things right before the action takes place, that, that's the issue. So I, if you want to continue having developers answer questions when the, the action item is called, then I would actually suggest that you allow public comment, um, on that item. If you're going to open the floor to anybody, you would allow it at that time.
And in that, in that case, we could keep this as is, that it's items not on the agenda. Because if it's on the agenda, then we'll ask for comment at the time of the agenda item.
Correct. And I think that's what we, I think that's what we actually currently have and that's how we've operated. It just sometimes, um, got a little muddied.
Well, and so the only thing to that is it's kind of going without saying, but I think we need to say it in there that if there's public comment on an agenda item, that they would be given time to speak during the agenda item. Otherwise, it looks as if you're not having any opportunity for public comment on an agenda item.
Correct.
And I, I would agree with that. Does that, does that imply that we have to make some kind of a, a statement asking for other comments once, let's say, you keep using the developer. The developers made his or her comments, then do we have to say, are there any other persons present that would like to make a comment? Or do we, how proactive do we get, I guess is what the question really is?
I, I would advise if, if the developer is making comments, that we allow anyone with an adverse interest, um, the opportunity to respond to, to comments of the developer.
But do we have to state that they now have that opportunity? That's my question.
And not if it's in this document. Because now we'll have established rules for how council is to be conducted, right? So at that point, they would have the opportunity to, to say that they want to provide a public comment.
And I think that the key there, Kevin, is in the beginning of this, and this is maybe where this needs to be drafted into two sections. Um, not agenda items and agenda items, but even those that want to speak on an agenda item, I would assume we'd still want them to sign up, send in a paper at the beginning of the meeting that would then be given to the chair to be able to recognize that individual to make that comment at the appropriate time.
Yes.
So we do that for public hearings and that's, that, that, uh, that process is outlined. So we could add that same process to, um, E. Instead of putting it in B, we would put it in E because it would be a scheduled item. And then we would, we would go through and state that in section E.
Yeah. Okay. And then the other one I had kind of goes, dovetails into that in five point five. When you're allowing public comments, sometimes it gets a little long and especially where it's an item of, you know, a lot of comments to be given. So the presiding officer shall have the power to set a reasonable time limits. That's where it differs from the two thousand and nine version where it says that the council will set those time limits. And I kind of like that because then we as a body get to decide, do we give everyone two minutes, three minutes, whatever that may be? And so I think that ought to be switched to the, the council has the power to set reasonable time limits. Um, and then item number.
Just on that real quick, um, that oftentimes the, the, the presiding officer will state that upfront. Just say, hey, we've set aside and, and not, really, it's on our agenda. A lot of times we say, hey, this is two minutes. But if we could, um, maybe we, we could have a standard for that in general. Um, and then the presiding officer, you know, if the council says, hey, we need more time, then the presiding officer could say, hey, um, I'm going to modify their agenda or allow more time or, or whatever.
I think in the past, when we've had stuff like that, I don't think it calls for a vote during it. It just says that the council to set reasonable time limits. And so I know in the past, um, I'm thinking back to where we had the gender discrimination ordinance. Um, it was reached out to council members ahead of time because they're, they knew there would be a lot of public comment. And, and the mayor just said, hey, you okay with this? And it was kind of decided on. I don't know how we do that or if we formally set it upfront. But I think the council's the one that's listening to the comments to have to make a decision. And I think it, as a body, it should be the one to determine how much they want to listen or what those time limits should be.
That be, was that before we were in, Rob? Or is that where we end?
Uh, that was before we were in.
Yeah, I don't remember. So you know, they discussed that before the meeting because I remember, I remember thinking I'm in the back of this meeting and I'm sure glad I'm not in the front of this.
Yeah. I talked with council member LaBaron afterwards and he admitted that, that comment. Okay. And I know sometimes we've had other things where before the meeting, we've talked about it. But I just think it's, again, whoever's making the voter decisions got to be able to have the determination on how much they need to hear on that subject. So that's why I think it would be. So that's why I think it would be good to go to the council.
So, so is that just?
You have quite different opinions instead of one person being.
Yeah, I was just thinking the same thing. What if one council member wants five minutes and one wants two? And are we going to debate that in public? Or, or do we just set?
I don't know if it's ever really been a problem, but that's what the 2009 version says is that it would be a motion. Is what you would have. And we could do a set standard where it's two minutes. And then it could be changed by a motion of the council. I'm good with that, but I just think that that power ought to rest with the council. That's got to make that decision on. How much they want to hear of the public comments.
I like the idea of the presiding officer said, how many people are here with that same point of view when they raise their hands? Does anybody have anything different to say? And then they can speak.
Yeah, I, I, and I'm with, with Barbara on that, but the chances of them saying something different. Rather than standing up and reiterating, we, we've all been through that. I, I think of the. The home that was going to come, come in across the street from the temple. There were multiple people and we asked them for any differing, Rob and Brad, you remember this? And they stood up and they all recited the same thing over and over and over again. And it's, that's, that's, that's a tough one.
And I, I feel like that's sometimes difficult because you're trying to get efficiency, but you're still trying to represent the people. And I know that when we were in a county commission meeting, fighting for AF Canyon. They kind of tried to do that a little bit and that was frustrating because I had my ideas I wanted to share. And in my mind, they may have been a little bit different than Brad's, but in the chairman's mind, it may have been the exact same thing. So. I feel like, gosh, you're my elected official on this. I want to be able to have my two cents heard. I would love that opportunity, whether it's two minutes or one minute or 30 seconds or whatever I had. And the, the same thing would be in six point two under public hearings, item B. It's the same thing. Just set by the chair, have it set by the. Council, maybe again it's set at two minutes and then it can be changed by the council, but just a thought.
What if we put something in there, the presiding officer shall determine a reasonable amount based on advice and consent from the city council?
I'm good with that. I don't know if that changes anything, then you'd still have to have a motion and a decision on it, but. Sure.
I'm good with whatever. I'll stay as long as you need at any meeting you want. So. And if you want to hear five minutes, you can. And if you want to in the middle change. Then we can make a motion to change it. Maybe we go to two minutes. I think there's some. Again, if somebody whispers in my ear. I want to hear a little more. I mean, I just, again, I think we're getting into the, into some real weeds here. It's not a power thing. You've mentioned the word power. I don't think it's power. I think there's, there's authority and there's just good order into a meeting. It's just, I maybe it's maybe the better word is responsibility instead of power.
I just going off the word that they used there in the document of power. So I didn't mean to make that. One way or the other, but.
But before we jump around, I mean, we need to settle one thing before we go on to a next and then the next. So I'm just going to ask the council as far as changing that. I mean, again, I. I have no problem with it. If you want the council to have the ability to determine meeting by meeting on how much time you want to hear. It's not very often, but we can, what would we like to do with just that order before we move on to something else and talk about that?
Quick comment if I may. How many times? What's that?
Two minutes, Kevin.
Two minutes. I will keep it under two minutes. How many times have people been told it's a two minute time limit and five minutes later, they're still warming up? Two minutes is pretty brief, so we better be careful. If we give them five, we might be there for a half hour. That was less than two minutes.
Well, actually that was one of my comments. I keep thinking this only matters if we're willing to enforce it.
You know, in the past, we've had, we actually, one time I brought Camden with a timer right in front of him.
And I think.
This spurred it along.
Yeah. And I think that this is again, like you said, mayor, looking 10 years down the road to when there's more discord on a council, right? And it's just laying that out and saying, okay, whose responsibility is that? And laying that at the council's feet to make that determination. But again, if we say two minutes is the standard and if the council wants to change it, then they can. I think that's doable as well or. You know, the mayor sets a time with advice and consent. I'm open to any of those items.
I say we set a standard of two minutes and then the city council can always make a motion to extend it if they feel differently.
I would, I would be in favor of that.
Yeah.
I certainly don't want to curtail conversation and I am right now dreading this three and a half hour meeting ending as it is. So.
I had this going on to six, really, I did.
That was six AM tomorrow.
Lost a bet from Keith, from somebody in the staff. So, okay. Robert, anything else?
Yeah. So just in section D, it talks about needing the address has to be verbally stated. If they're filling out the form, I'm not sure why we need to have them state their address publicly. Is that just for the council's information?
Yeah.
I just don't know if we want.
That's so that you know if they're your constituent or somebody else's.
Yeah.
And just for the newspaper too.
Yeah.
I think back to, I don't know, if it's a controversial issue like we had with that. Discrimination ordinance, you know, there were death threats left on windshields of people that attended and things of that nature. When you have something really controversial. I just don't know if people would feel comfortable putting their home address out there. In a public meeting, in a public setting, and if we have to require that. Maybe that's a question we could ask them. It's a question that the council has of where they're at, but if it's on the form, I think that that's enough. That we at the council could then question it after the meeting or where did they live? But I don't know if it should be put in the public record, but just.
Yeah, I kind of agree. Just keep that information private.
What if they just stated that they, they are from American Fork or from Highland or whatever city?
Live down the road from this proposed.
We're, we're, all of our addresses are public and these, this, this stuff is being addressed by people that are concerned. I have zero issue. I, I think they ought to have their, their address brought up. Why, why, why would they, why would they be reluctant to bring their address up?
Again, I'm just thinking of a very controversial issue, you know. We luckily haven't had those in the last few years, but we have had them in the past. And I'm just thinking of safety. I don't know if we'd want to put people in that position. We already have their address because they wrote it on the form. So I don't know why we as a city would have to have them put it out there in a public meeting to. Jeopardize themselves further if it was a. Thing of controversy.
But so that is going to be accessible to anyone who wanted it after the meeting anyway. So what difference does it make?
Well, they'd have to go through a grandma request and I don't know if it would be accessible to them or not. I don't know if that's redacted.
It would not, their address would typically be redacted as private information.
It would be?
Typically it would be, yes.
Would be.
The, the, the problem is if it's a signup form at the back of the room, everybody, I mean, somebody could just take their phone. Take a picture of all the people who signed up for comment with their address. If we're making them put it on a, on a form, it's not really.
I think the form we have is a form, and maybe I understood it wrong. I thought it was a name on a list. And then they filled out a physical form and handed that to Terry Lynn with more detailed information on it, but maybe.
Yeah.
No, we've been, we've been a little loosey goosey with that.
Yeah.
Maybe more so even with scouts and stuff like that, but this is, that's what we've been, that's, that's been standard practice. So. Let's, we'll strike address. I do think it's though, it's very important for us to have them state that they are a resident.
What city they live in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Question to ask. I don't think there's a problem there at all. Section nine point one, it just says the mayor may also appoint councils to serve as liaisons. Do we need to do advice and consent on that one? Or is that okay with just appoint? Because I know some require advice and consent and some don't.
I don't remember any of the, of us being, having, our appointments having to be approved.
Yeah. So mine on North Point has to be approved. Mine on Dispatch has to be approved.
That's, that's because they're special service districts and you're actually being appointed as a, as a county representative, not a city representative.
But they require a resolution from the council. I just know if that, but that was an appointment by the mayor, right? So I didn't know how that. Maybe that's not a liaison position. I don't know. I, I just saw that sometimes we do it, sometimes we don't and didn't know if that needed to be in there.
There are times that there's required of me to send a letter stating, you know, this is our liaison.
Not a huge deal. I just thought sometimes we do it, sometimes we don't. Just if it needs to be clarified, great for legal purposes. If not, fair enough. So maybe just put a question mark by that and Sherilyn could get back with us on it. Ten point two, one, item two talks about conflicts of interest. This is what I've been thinking of for a while. Could we add a five minute? Training on that every year? That's something I think that gets neglected quite a bit. I just know myself, sometimes during the year, maybe I've engaged in other things that may be conflicts. It'd just be helpful to maybe have that training as a council member with our annual. Open Meeting Act, just to say, hey, again. Here's where conflicts are and how you handle them. And if you've got any, here's how we disclose them inside of American Fork City.
I personally have no problem adding that to our Open Meetings Act. It might make that training, you know, five minutes to 10 minutes. But, but that is not a problem. Actually, we've included that with some of our other government agencies when we do Open Meetings Acts already. Because it's, it becomes more and more of an issue. It, it seems like it's becoming more of an issue as, as time goes on. Not just in American Fork, just throughout all government agencies.
In that same section, the paragraph six. Excuse me, the second paragraph. Talks about disclosing the conflicts and then the last sentence says, and they shall. Be encouraged to abstain from participating in deliberations and decision making. Where conflicts may exist. I've had conflicts in the past and when I thought I checked with. Prior mayor, and I don't know if I've checked with any with you, Brad, or you, David, but prior administrations, when I've checked with them. And the attorney, I think also, basically they said you're allowed to participate and. And, and express your points of view, but you need to recuse yourself from the vote. And that's the way I've understood it is that you couldn't vote, but you could express opinion. So I was. Surprised to see this in there, just wondering.
I would have to pull the specific code. I believe it actually does not, it, one, it depends on the conflict and the level of conflict. But it does not require you necessarily to recuse on all issues. So I, I can, I can certainly include that in our conflict training. But, but it is not something that you have to recuse yourself entirely on, on most issues.
Sherilyn and I went through this because the, the, the verbiage is important. There are times like Sherilyn is saying, there, there's times when a council member may say. Disclose some kind of a conflict and still participate in the deliberations and even vote. They're, they're encouraged however, and that's where, that's where this language came in is look, if you have a conflict and you, and it could be a problem. Don't put the city in a, in a tough position here by participating and voting. So you're, you're, you're encouraged to abstain. And, and not vote.
And I, I understand that, but this says from participating in deliberations. And I always thought you could participate in the deliberation because sometimes the conflict gives you knowledge. Of things that the others may not have.
But, but that goes to you also in some situations can vote, right? So it, it's, it's a matter of. Certain issues, there's going to be a stronger encouragement than others. To not even engage in deliberations because you may know information that. It is a pure conflict and it wouldn't necessarily. Be proper to be a part of the conversation. Other issues, that's not the case. So a lot of this is, we have to put in strong encouragement, but every issue is different.
And the council member decides.
Yeah, I think.
Yes.
Put into their code or in their, their rules. If you dispose of conflict, you can't vote. But I know they took maybe a harder line than others. I think it's good to just, I don't know. Something to maybe think about for when this comes up in council meeting, I guess.
Well, if you have direction, it'd be nice to get it right as we present it to you in council meeting. If there's, if there's language you prefer, tell us the language.
Gray area. I, I prefer that, David. Kind of like what you talked about. Why put the city at jeopardy? You know, why not just abstain from the, the vote? Altogether, but that's where I would personally be. That way we're always in the white area. But that's tough because every situation is different. So.
Vote and the conversation or just the vote?
I think you would be, you'd be able to comment, but just like any other member of the public.
And that's what I'm saying. You should be able to comment, but not vote.
Yeah. Like I said, like a public comment period, but I don't think you should as a council member have more. Ability to comment more than the opposition to whatever.
Anybody else, yeah.
So Kevin, that if public comment is different than deliberate, where you're going back and forth.
Yeah, I understand that.
This, this can be, if you, if the council wants to take a hard line and just say, hey. You don't get to deliberate or vote, but you can make a public comment if that's what the council wants to come down on a hard line. You know, like Alpine, I, I don't know. That's, this is up to you.
I, I, I feel like it is something that we need to have consensus on. So that we can move this forward to our next council meeting. I would think that if you're involved with a. I'm just thinking how we have, I, I'm not trying to solve a problem. I'm just trying to prevent things and maybe, maybe they weren't, we're into the. Maybe I got into the weeds with this and we discussed it. And maybe we're a little bit deep into the weeds now with some real crazy hypotheticals, but maybe hypotheticals are where we need to be. So. Tell me what the consensus of this group is and we can put it in. I'm, I'm very comfortable with that. Because I don't see this being a big issue.
There was a lot of respect they had for council member La Barron. He had some property that was on the agenda. He made his comment, got up, walked off from the. You know, dais there and went downstairs, left the, the building until the decision was made and then he came right back up. And I thought that was pretty good. I just. I like that appearance of we're always. Got the best interest of the city at heart, right? But. That's where my two cents is at.
I don't have any problem with that, having like a stricter rule.
Okay. All they need is one thumb and I've got three.
Education on then making sure people know when they have a conflict of interest. I, I think I'll try to get actually a memo prepared and out to you guys sooner rather than later on that. Rather than even waiting for that, that training. I think that's something that would be helpful for everybody right now.
Somehow it'd be good to use some examples of what conflicts are. Like I work for UVU. But I have no influence over anything. So.
I don't know if I believe that, but okay.
You have the power of the pen, Barbara, and what you write is fact.
Yeah. We hardly write three things a month.
Hey, anything else? I mean, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, I just had a couple more here in there. Eleven point four, this talks about third party service related relationships. I'm just trying to think of where this comes into play. You know, occasionally Republic likes to come and meet with us as council members, even the school district. You know, UDOT from time to time will meet with council members, Jason Burningham. Chamber, Chamber of Commerce, meet with different council members, TAF. I'm just listing a whole bunch of different ones there. Here it says to be able to engage in any conversation, we need written permission from the mayor or city administrator. I just thought that seemed to be. A little more than what we're currently doing.
So this really is the contractual engagement where you have a third party that's going to charge. The city for your meeting with them. So let's say that there was an issue that came up and. And you needed to meet. And you needed to meet with, um, an accountant, but you decided to just go meet with whatever accountant you wanted. On behalf of the city to do some work for the city, you're going to have a third party engagement with them. And, uh, the city may have already, we might, we might already have an accountant that we're working with, but the council member's like, yeah. I want to go work with this other accountant and get a different opinion. And then that accountant bills the city. And so we have a, we have a, a fee that we have to pay to that accountant besides the accountant that we're already working with.
Gotcha. So the way I read that was contractual engagement was like a contractual engagement we have with Republic already. Or the Chamber of Commerce. So maybe we need to do is a contractual arrangement where the meeting would generate a fee or some kind of obligation. Just maybe clarify that a little bit.
And just to kind of expand on, on David's statement, it, it wouldn't just be going to a different accountant, but. Um, you know, our, our legal services are free or not free. Our legal services are under contract.
Well, we got that on public record.
Yeah, right?
We got a good budget next year.
If, if, if you call me, I'm not billing the city hourly for that phone call. But when we have these, uh, outside litigation cases, even though that is legal counsel for the city. Um, for that case, they're still billing the city by the, the point one hour. And so I think that would fall into that. So, so council member Shelton, I think that your, your verbiage change would be spot on. If it's going to create an additional financial obligation, um, of the city. That I think that's really the intent of that, that provision.
Yeah.
Well, it kind of states it. It does say to avoid an unnecessary financial obligation. Maybe there's one or two words to tweak.
Yeah, I think it just has to be that if it's going to generate a bill, then we need the written permission. I think it just says the policy is here to avoid that, but it doesn't say that. Anyway, I just thought that would be good to clarify. So I read that as like, oh, no more meetings with Republic, no more meetings with this without getting the permission of the mayor.
Oh, heavens. I don't have enough time.
Uh, well, I, I, yeah, so, um.
Do we need to, do we need to put something in there then that says if, if that happens? And there is a bill provided the city, um, say a council member goes rogue and does that. That that council member who met with that third party will be responsible for payment of that?
I think that's fair.
I mean, cause of, it, it seems like, you know. In order to put some teeth in this, again, don't know when we'll have a problem with this, but. You know, uh, where we are talking about to avoid, here's this directive allows the city to avoid a necessary financial obligation. If in the case that financial obligation is incurred as a result of a meeting without permission, that council member will be, uh. That council member will be.
Responsible for the.
Will be responsible for payment.
What if the council member says, fine, I'll pay it. I, I'm going to go and I'm going to talk to an attorney about an issue with the city, even though the city already has it, an attorney on that. And.
Well, the chances are there wouldn't be no, there would be no action that comes from that, David, because.
Other than they would use that and say, hey, look, as a council member, I got this information. And I guess they could do that anyway. That's true.
Yeah.
I mean, they could. So if, if, so your language would say, hey, if, if a council member does that and it was not approved, that council member is, uh. Is responsible for those.
For payment to that third party. That, I don't know. Again, that, that's one of those things that I think is kind of way out there, but hey, there's every bit the chance that could happen.
Thinking about some of the, some of my friends who might just charge the city for talking with me.
Yeah.
I mean, some friends who, who charge the city for other things.
So, uh, eleven point six, just down under item B, I thought it would be good maybe to also add in there. Short discussions or brief follow-up regarding opinions or questions about a municipal issue, comma, or request for service. I've just known sometimes I, I felt like as a council member, a little bit of a gray area, if there's a pothole, I should be able to report it just like any other citizen. Or if there's a drug house, but obviously if it goes more in depth than just reporting a request for service, which would fall under item C or D. Would be there, but I thought it'd be good to clarify that as a council member, if I get a call, I can pass them on. Or take that and, and pass it on to the department head.
Well, it says it may be handled directly between a council member and a city staff member. A and B.
Yeah. It just says questions about a municipal issue. I didn't know if that included requests for service because it's very clear about, you know, not giving direction. And you're not, you're just saying, hey, this needs a service issue. So if that's contained in there, great. Just didn't know if it needed maybe another comma and add request for services to be included.
I think it's included in there. If it's, if there's a pothole, I mean, that's a short discussion or, or a issue about a. Uh, you know, a question about a municipal issue. I think that's fine. I think it's contained in that.
As, as long as it's limited to like regular maintenance issues, I would hate, I would hate for us as council members to be requesting. I don't know, go pave a road or something.
But, but that would be D where it, where it affects a policy or a program. Or a multi, you know, a complex issue, because that goes into funding.
Okay.
So if it's, if it's a short discussion or, or a question or an opinion quickly about a municipal issue, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Last one I have, Mayor, thanks for your patience, and that is, uh, item fourteen point one. We got these six items of, uh, I'm going to call them reprimand or how to be able to, they call them sanctions, whatever we want to call them. Um, I did see what happened up there in Kaysville. And you know, yet they, they went ahead and they censured one city council member and then the city council turned around and reprimanded the mayor. And all it seemed to do was generate more news and divide in a community than anything else. I didn't know if we needed that, or hopefully we could put in there that the parties could be able to meet, but you know what? If they don't. Uh, I mean, because a censure or a verbal reprimand, all that's going to do is further divide. It doesn't have any teeth to it. Um, I'm thinking of things back to where the mayor and council didn't get along back when Clark was on the council the first time. You know, it just, I call it political weaponry. I don't know if it's good to have there. The two things I did think that were good were item four, maybe loss of committee and, and commissioners, uh, board assignments with the advice and consent of the council. So if that council member totally, you know, has gone rogue and three other council members and the mayor say, let's yank that assignment from them, let's, let's do that. And then I thought item five, where they could be removed from a meeting because it's already in state code would be good enough. But I don't know. I didn't know if anything else needed to be. Added to it. Felt like it added more fuel to the fire than trying to diffuse it.
I can see that. I guess it's kind of a slowly warming up period. But you're right, um, some, some individuals would just almost think that's, uh, that's something nice. So I got reprimanded. Wow.
Yeah.
So.
Sometimes I'd like to lose my committee board and commission assignments.
So I'm uncomfortable. I, I, I can agree with that. It, it's more of a stepped up process. Rather than just go right for, you know, pre-yank this, yank that. So if you guys are comfortable with it, we move one and two. A reprimand in a public meeting is just to basically. Tell him to stop it or her to stop it or whatever. So.
Can we bring back things like public flogging, stuff like that?
There's a license.
Some of these would actually make a difference.
Clark, there's a license required for that, so we would have to add language for the licensure for the flogger.
About the stock, the stockades or, or public flogging or some of those things that were, uh, you know.
That's why the fact.
There, there, uh, there was one thing in here that wasn't contained and I didn't mean to belabor it, but maybe it does need to be addressed. We did it one time on the council, have someone that liked to abstain from a lot of, uh, decision making. And I talked to David Church about this and I think you were with me, Kevin. I can't remember, or maybe.
Yeah, I think we did.
Remembering that wrong. And his recommendation was in some places they say, eh, they put it in the rules that an abstention is the same as a no vote. And it should be recorded as a no vote.
What I remember is he said that was really what it was.
Yeah.
Not in some places, but generally, basically.
In their, their procedures to make it, you know, all clear, interpreted right, except in cases of conflicts, right? But, um, uh, maybe that's something we needed to look at just because we had that issue in the past, but I'm, I'm done at this point.
So that, real quick, back to this before we jump to that, um, you, I, I want to make sure I'm clear. We would take out one, two and three. We would keep four and five. I think six is fine because it says, hey, if, if there's something in a state statute. Or a legal means agreed by the city council, then you could do something else. It gives council some option there. But we could take out like one, two and three.
I'm wondering if on one, we couldn't have something like. An informal private verbal warning. As the first step, that it doesn't have to be in public, but if, if somebody needs to be warned, I would think that. The council could give them some kind of a private warning, just another thought to prolong the meeting.
But what I've liked in the past is when we had situations like that, we each individually went and talked to that member. And I would see that being the informal. I feel like an informal formal. Work session or executive session, just, I don't know. I like the idea that if you've got issues, let's talk about it privately and try and work it out. And at the end of the day, we were all elected and none of us have the ability to really pull any power. So. I see it more as a divisive than, than bringing back together and trying to, to work together.
I like starting with the informal things, but I also think that if those don't work. The formal letter. Is information to the voter. For the future.
So you're saying League Three in? You know, I would agree to that. You know, it's kind of like, um, that's a warm up. That's a shot across the bow, if I, if I could say terms. And, but they need to know where the line is that maybe that is you cross the line. Here's a letter to prove it. And then we talk about lots of, lots of things. Now we can go, and, and it is in for the public to see.
That, that's standard procedure in business and everything. If there's a problem, you write a letter, you put that letter in the person's individual's file.
I, I'm saying just get rid of one and two.
Yeah.
One and two, yeah. And these are sanctions, by the way. It's not just a procedure. It's an actual sanction. So I think we. Start with number three.
Yeah, I just went down up in Kaysville and, you know. That was worn as a badge of honor for both of those censureships for the mayor and the council member. And you had adamant residents on both sides of a controversial issue that showed up. So I don't know if it would really be a. Something the voters would use for information. It might actually give them reason to say, yeah, I was against the masks and I wanted to hold a mask gathering and. I got censured for it, you know, I, I just don't see we're holding that out in the public and to talk about it and debate about it in the public. Does any good to resolve anything because all it is, is a slap on the hand. And chances are that elected official already knows how you feel about it, but just. From what I observed.
All right. Anything else, Rob?
No, that's it.
Okay. Anything else from? Who's, who's the chair referring to in number three? The mayor or majority of the council for body.
So if you were on a committee, um, and it wasn't a city council, if a city council would be the mayor, but if it was a committee. Your chair, uh, would be the, 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 uh, you know, leading the, the, that. That body.
And that makes sense, but I, without rereading it, everything seemed to point towards this being city council stuff prior to that, but.
Yeah.
I'm not going to.
But if you go, if you go to a different meeting as, you know, what you do with an RDA, you don't have a mayor, you have a chair.
Okay, the RDA, that works.
Adopted for both then?
Well, this is our city council meeting. We can take chair out and leave it mayor. Or majority of the council. That's fine.
I'm good having it adopted for both. I'm just saying if it's good for one, probably good for the other. Do we need two separate documents or can we make one document good for both? And the building authority, I guess, as well.
There's a lot in here that wouldn't apply to a building authority, but this could. So. It's probably, it probably makes sense to take chair out of this one and probably adopt different ones for. The other boards and committees.
I would recommend, I would recommend, uh, having separate documents also because you have your compensation structure and everything else in this document. Um, you would want each, each committee or board to have their own if, if that's the route. It, it can be very similar. But I would make, make each one have their own.
Yeah.
All right. Any other? I know it's late. I have one last one.
But.
Section ten. Code of Conduct, City Council Code of Conduct. Um. And this is a clarification question because it's basically keeps referring to city council. And then in. Paragraph four. Um, in that section, the second paragraph starts out, council members shall respect. And adhere to the six-member council structure.
Oh, I had a question about that too.
I thought we had a five-member council and a mayor, so I'm confused.
By law, we have a six-member council form of government. One council member is the mayor. Who doesn't get to vote.
But he's a non, the mayor's a non-voting person.
He's a non-voting member of the council, except in the case of a tie, but by law, yeah, we have a six-member council.
That's in that Utah league book they gave us a few that they have the forms of government and different things in there that.
Yeah, and I, I wondered if that's what that was referring to. It's just confusing. I think if you don't remember all these little details. That government comes up with. At least for me.
Well, and the question I have then, does that mean that anytime it refers to council members in this document, it's including the mayor except where otherwise identified?
Do we really need to clarify that? I mean, ho- honestly, do we, do we really need to clarify that?
I was, there's just a question I, I had. I mean, if someone comes up and says, hey, eh, eh, never mind.
We, we are called a six-member council structure, correct?
Council members listen courteously and attentively, but the mayor can go to sleep. No.
Thank you, Barbara. Do we need?
Good, Barbara.
Question on that, because if you do, I'll take a nap.
This is a work session. We can't have a motion.
All right. Is there anything else?
Um, this is going to be an unpopular mayor, but, um, and, and I'm a team player, but perhaps I'm not fit for the office. Four-hour work session is, is too long. I don't know whether we can, we can submit things beforehand. Um, or, you know, because I'll gear up, I'll gear up for a long meeting. Um, but, but four hours as we go through this, I mean, spelling corrections and stuff like that, that can all be submitted, I would think beforehand. Um, and I don't know whether it's holding Alpine School District or something. This doesn't lie with any one individual. I'm certainly not saying that, but. Um, I've, I've shifted plans, not anyone's problem, but my own for two other meetings this evening, um, just, just my plan, but. If, if, if four-hour work sessions are going to be something we need to plan on, then I will. I will plan differently for, you know, uh, Tuesday, the responsibilities that I have there on the first and the third. Um, but I, 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 I know a lot of this and, and I, I, I know what the feeling might, must be to some degree with me. Uh, I'm not trying to skirt anything, but some of this, it seems like would be beneficial if maybe it could be brought up beforehand, even. Even if we had some type of public forum where we could, my questions on this were. So that it could be a little bit more rounded up prior to the time we get here. I mean. Four hours is, uh, four hours is a long meeting, um, and in that, so. I don't know if there's anything we can do to improve the efficiency of that. It's not on you, mayor, any more than it's on me or anybody else. I have my share of long-winded, uh, things that I go off on, but I just. Tonight felt really excessive to me.
Point taken. You know, in the past, I've tried to put limits. Point taken. You know, in the past, I've tried to put limits on the end of each, you know, agenda item, twenty-five minutes, whatever. It's, it's, it's to provide a framework and even, even we'll discuss in key staff, how long do you think we go? Tonight definitely went a little long, there's no question about it.
It's a surprise.
Yeah. So.
I think accordingly, my responsibility is here. I, I, you know. I'm, I'm here for the long haul, I'm dug in, but it seems like sometimes we could maybe as a team. Do things a bit more efficiently, but maybe the open forum is debate is the best way to do it. So.
Looking at the agenda items, I just kind of felt this was going to be a long night.
And I, I didn't.
I did because of the complexity of the documents and everything else.
I honestly thought the longest debate would be the roads and I think this was, I thought this would be pretty quick, but.
Okay.
Anyway, doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
Alright, thank you very much. And we have a motion to adjourn, just kidding, we'll see. Goodnight all.
Night.
Night.